April 11th and a workshop scheduled for February 14th regarding 41 North Main Street Development. And the next item is consideration of Police Department Matters, the department update from Chief Richard Thompson, and then a discussion about police detail policy regarding community center. The next group of items are regarding the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, which is scheduled for April 23rd, 2019, and consideration of FY 2020 Omnibus Budget and Capital Items, and we have Elder Housing here tonight, Conservation Commission, and Building Inspections. We also have the Select Board Budget, Legal Budget, and Police Department. Consideration of 2019 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Governance Task Force Articles, there are four of those articles from the Governance Task Force, two, they are except MGL Chapter 59, Section 57(c) regarding quarterly tax bills, Treasurer made to an appointed position, amend GBL Chapter 3s 6.2 to include Information Technology Manager, and then Human Resource Position. Then amend Chapter 25 Stormwater Management regarding illicit discharge, that's with Sean Colleen, CM and D Director, and then request for comment from Planning Board regarding site plan change of use of existing barn, Silverwood Farm. And then under Routine Business, Finance Director Report, Town Administrator Report, and Selectmen Reports, and then adjourn not to return to open session for an executive session. Under the executive session is MGL Chapter 30a, Section 21a1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The second exemption is MGL Chapter 30a, Section 21a, subsection 2, to conduct collective bargaining agreement negotiations, grievances, police union. Number three, MGL Chapter 30a, Section 21a, subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, police chief, police lieutenant, fire chief, finance director. And that's it.
Terrific. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor? Terrific. The first item is consideration of the consent agenda, the payroll warrant, the list of the next meetings, and the informational workshop regarding 41 North Main Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
Just a question if I could.
Yes.
I wasn't here when the informational session was set up for February 14th. Is that to be a full meeting of the board, or is that to listen to the presentations from the developer? What's the intention for that meeting?
The intention is to be, have an informational meeting along with the Planning Board and the
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Conservation Commission Advisory.
So it's like a bunch of boards all meeting together?
Meeting together to, so there's one, one big meeting allowing public comment to the developer. I think it's a productive workshop for them to
So the developer will be there too?
Yes.
Yeah, the developer will be making a presentation. There was, at one of the meetings that you were not able to be there, Paul, there was another presentation of a substantially changed proposal, and we thought it would be helpful to have a meeting with all of the affected boards together at one place, where everyone could have a discussion about it.
Okay. When it's labeled a workshop, does that mean there'll be no votes taken, or is that any?
Correct.
No votes taken?
No votes. That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Terrific. I'm sorry, did I have a second on the motion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda? I will not be here on the March 28th meeting. I'm going to be out of the country, so just need to have in mind, somebody else will be chairing, and that we have a quorum for it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of Police Department Matters. Chief Thompson's going to provide us an update.
Wanted to start our first and foremost, by just sharing with the board that, the first thing I wanted to present to the community are some awards for my personnel, accommodation awards and letters of merit for their action during the armed robbery that occurred at our Walgreens. So many of the people that are in the audience tonight are family members and friends and whatnot of my personnel. So if the board is okay, I wanted to read some of the, read off the letters of merit and accommodations, and hand them off to the personnel, and hoping maybe you folks can take pictures with the officers if you're willing to do that. The first award we are providing to Officer Patrick Crossen is a police letter of merit. On September, I should wear my glasses, of course, barely read this. There we go. On September 15th, 2018, dispatch advised you of an armed robbery at our Walgreens located on North Main Street in Sherburne. You immediately responded, established that nobody had been injured, and began to secure the scene with the limited resources available to you. You were responsible for securing the exterior of Walgreens and for providing direction to responding officers from surrounding communities. Additionally, you assisted Lieutenant David Bento with the felony stop of one of the suspects involved in this violent criminal act. Your efforts were critical to the successful indictment of three violent criminal offenders. You displayed professionalism, courage, and bravery during an extremely threatening situation, and you were able to show great compassion for the persons victimized by this violent event, all which is expected and demanded of you by me and the residents of the town of Sherburne. I am proud of your actions on September 15th, 2018, and proud that you are a member of the Sherburne Police Department. You exemplify care, compassion, and commitment to our profession and to those we serve. Congratulations on a job well done. Officer Crossen? On September 15th, 2018, dispatch advised you of an armed robbery at our Walgreens located on North Main Street in Sherburne. You immediately responded, established that nobody had been injured, and began to secure the scene with the limited resources available to you. You were responsible for securing the interior of Walgreens and for providing comfort and support to the persons traumatized by this violent criminal act. It did not go unnoticed that with your limited experience in our profession, you took control of a greatly intense situation without hesitation or fear. Your efforts were critical to providing comfort to the victims and critical to the successful indictment of three violent criminal offenders. You displayed professionalism, courage, and bravery during an extremely threatening situation, and you were able to show great compassion for the persons victimized by this violent event, all which is expected and demanded of you by me and the residents of the town of Sherburne. I am proud of your actions on September 15th, 2018, and proud that you are a member of the Sherburne Police Department. You exemplify care, compassion, and commitment to our profession and to those we serve. Congratulations on a job well done. On September 15th, 2018, dispatch advised you of an armed robbery at our Walgreens located on North Main Street in Sherburne. You immediately responded, established that nobody had been injured, and began to secure the scene with the limited resources available to you. You were responsible for securing the exterior of Walgreens and for providing direction to responding officers from surrounding communities. Additionally, you assisted in coordinating communication with surrounding police agencies, as well as the Massachusetts State Police, in an effort to provide immediate safety and security to our community members. You displayed professionalism, courage, and bravery during an extremely threatening situation, and you were able to show great compassion for the persons victimized by this violent event, excuse me, all which is expected and demanded of you by me and the residents of the town of Sherburne. I am proud of your actions on September 15th, 2018, and proud that you are a member of the Sherburne Police Department. You exemplify care, compassion, and commitment to our profession and to those we serve. Congratulations on a job well done. On September 15th, 2018, our department received a call for an armed robbery at our Walgreens located on North Main Street in Sherburne. You were off duty during this call. However, you immediately responded and supervised a local search for the violent offenders throughout our downtown and surrounding neighborhoods. You were responsible for coordinating many police officers from surrounding communities. Additionally, you coordinated the effort to notify our community members via Code Red to reduce risk to our residents. Your efforts were critical to maintaining a safe and secure environment for our community and for the successful indictment of three violent criminal offenders. You displayed professionalism, courage, and bravery during an extremely threatening situation, and you were able to show great compassion for the persons victimized by this violent event, all which is expected and demanded of you by me and the residents of the town of Sherburne. I am proud of your actions on September 15th, 2018, and proud that you are a member of the Sherburne Police Department. You exemplify care, compassion, and commitment to our profession and to those we serve. Congratulations on a job well done. The next two awards are a little step above and beyond the letter of merit. The next two of your police officers are receiving police commendation awards, and the first one is being presented to this gentleman here to my right, Lieutenant David Bento. On September 15th, 2018, dispatch advised you of an armed robbery at our Walgreens located on North Main Street in Sherburne. You immediately responded, established nobody had been injured, and began to secure the scene with the limited resources available to you. Additionally, you learned that a suspicious vehicle fled the area, and you were able to locate the suspicious, yeah, suspicious vehicle. Without fear, utilizing your training and experience, you conducted a felony stop of the suspicious vehicle, and as a direct result of your keen observations and investigative skills, you located and identified critical evidence that assisted in identifying the persons who committed this violent act in our community. You displayed professionalism, courage, and bravery during an extremely threatening situation, and you were able to show great compassion for the persons victimized by this violent event, all of which is expected and demanded of you by me and the residents of the town of Sherburne. I am proud of your actions on September 15th, 2018, and proud that you are a member of the Sherburne Police Department. You exemplify care, compassion, and commitment to our profession and to those we serve. Congratulations on a job well done. Before I present this last commendation, I think our guys and gals would clearly agree that Detective Godino, without question, is one of the most talented investigators that I certainly have ever worked for, and the community should be, should know that this guy literally leaves no rock unturned. He did an incredible job, and I'd love to get into the entire case, but it's still actively being prosecuted at court right now. So, that being said, the next award is a police commendation award for Detective James Godino. On September 15th, 2018, our community was victimized by an armed robbery at our Walgreens located on North Main Street in Sherburne. As a detective assigned to investigate this criminal act of violence, you utilized your expansive training and experience to identify the persons responsible. You committed tireless amounts of time and effort coordinating with local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies, and the Middlesex District Attorney's Office to conduct interviews and secure critical evidence which was presented to a grand jury. Your efforts led to the successful indictment of three violent criminal offenders. You displayed professionalism, diligence, and unquestioned commitment to our community, all of which is expected and demanded of you by me and the residents of the town of Sherburne. I am proud of your months-long efforts and proud that you are a member of the Sherburne Police Department. You exemplify care, compassion, and commitment to our profession and to those we serve. Congratulations on a job well done.
Terrific. Well, before we move on, congratulations to Officers Crossley, Mitchell, Graziano, Tedstone, Pinto, and Godino. I'm a regular and loyal customer at Walgreens, and have chatted with him several times about the robbery, and they have nothing but the highest praise for you and your team. So they're, it obviously was traumatic for them, but I've had probably three or four conversations with them, they only have the highest praise for you and your, and your team, so.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. The next, I guess, effort, I guess is the best way to say this. As most are aware in town, I've started a cancer awareness initiative, and I will share, as most know, that I am a two-time survivor of colon cancer. I very recently, or I should say, I, we, my family, over the last year has definitely dealt with our share of cancer, and it's, to say that it's been challenging for all is really not saying enough. My mom, this past year, you know, struggled quite a bit with a form of cancer, and thank God, and thanks to the treatment that's available just east of here. She's here today to hopefully give everybody a big smile. My lovely wife, her parents both have come to cancer, and very recently, my wonderful sister-in-law over there, who is wearing pink boots and a pink hat because she is currently going through treatment for breast cancer, which is a diagnosis she received right before the holidays. Merry Christmas, right, Linda?
Right.
So, I had reached out to Bob Ward at Fox 25 and asked him to come out and do a story because I felt compelled to, you know, share my story and get my peers, not only across the state, but was now turning into a national push. In fact, we got a few calls from some police departments in California, and very recently, Sheriff's Department down in Florida adopted this idea and this cancer awareness effort. If people were not aware, we have now put these decals on all of our Sherburne Police Department cruisers. And for me, this is to, you know, say to people that, you know, cancer is treatable, as Chuck Young knows very well. Chuck and I had a, I think, a pretty lengthy personal conversation about your fight with cancer. Welcome to the team, Chuck. I wanted to, you know, kind of push this message that there is hope, we do, there is treatment there. Far too often when people use, you know, say the word cancer, it's, you know, the next thing you hear people say is, oh, you know, somebody's going to pass away, and that's just not true. I'm living and breathing proof of that. So I'm proud that we, this little town of Sherburne is getting this message out, and it's, I think, being received well across the state, and hopefully it's going to be receivable across the country. So I just wanted to introduce that idea to the community. I've also purchased a bunch of these smaller decals, and I've given them to my personnel, and they're selling them to whoever wants to buy them, and we're donating all the proceeds to the Jimmy Fund.
Best wishes to you and your family.
Thank you.
God bless you all.
Thank you. And I think the last item I wanted to bring to the board's attention, the community's attention, we have collectively, my personnel and I, worked on the redesign of a police badge, or police badges. I don't know if you guys have copies of this?
Yeah, I think we do.
You do?
This is
No, no, that's the, that's a cancer
Yeah, this printout of the decals, right? When I saw a decal that had a palm tree in it, I realized it wasn't a Metro West department.
Wishful thinking? Yeah, yeah.
A little warming.
So, if people weren't aware, we've got quite a boring-looking badge currently. It's really looks, almost looks like a security badge. If you look at it, it's got the state seal in the center, and it truly doesn't capture, you know, our community. So we worked collectively to come up with a different badge design, and that's, that's what we came up with. And if you look in the center, it's obviously got the town seal. I'll show you. The first one actually just came this, this past week. It's, it's my badge, if you want to take a look at it. And, you know, for my personnel, you know, now when they, you know, show people their badge and their wallet, it's, again, not this very bland-looking security badge. It's captures what Sherburne is. It's got a town seal, it's got the little green, what did you tell me this tree was again?
Pine tree shilling.
Forget already.
The pine tree shilling.
The pine tree shilling. Thank you.
The pine.
So, we've introduced this new badge, and we're going to be rolling it out hopefully next week when, when we receive the officers' badges.
I think George is going to keep it for his own
George, you can have it. How's that? And then, very briefly, I wanted the board and the community to know that I very recently reached out and communicated with DSTV, and we are going to hopefully start doing quarterly state-of-the-Sherburne Police Department, I guess, TV programs for, for the community. And the idea is, based on some of the input I've received from community members in my capacity as a public safety committee member, and traffic safety committee member, is that unfortunately, some, some folks can't get to these meetings, and they feel like they, you know, some of their questions or concerns aren't being answered, or, so the idea is going to be to offer residency opportunity to send us in some concerns and some questions, and then we can answer those questions live on TV, and I, you know, I'll have some of my officers show up to these on-camera interviews and whatnot, and introduce themselves, and talk about some of the things that we're doing in the community. That's, that's where we're at.
Great, thanks, Worthen.
Okay.
Very helpful update, and congratulations on the publicity you've been getting for the, the badge. It's really impressive.
Thanks, thanks. All from the little town of Sherburne.
David, do you want to tee up the next item for the police detail policy for the community center?
I think going back about, it's probably two years ago, we had received a presentation from the police department regarding policies from other towns about drinking on town, drinking in town buildings, and our concern was at the community center. So there were a few changes, a few changes that we implemented at that time, but there was never anything that proceeded beyond a draft of a policy. So there are two policies in here. One is our draft one from 2014, and then there's another draft from Paul that's from this month, and it incorporates the main, the biggest ideas of the 2014 policy, plus adds or expands on a couple of other ideas. So it's really for the police and, police chief and the board to see what these policies, these policies would work.
Terrific. Yeah, it's been a recurring item at a number of the meetings, reviewing the liquor licenses for events at the community center. So I had not seen the 2014 draft. Paul, do you want to discuss the major points in, in the draft policy that you put together?
I have to deal with, I have to deal with issues like this in connection with my job. I am a municipal lawyer, represent a number of communities. So I try to take information that I know as a municipal lawyer, try to use it to, to try and simplify and make things clearer about the way things are supposed to work. The first point really is this clarification of what the status is of the Sherburne Community Center, because we keep referring to it as public property, but in fact, it's subject to a long-term lease to a private organization. And so legally, when public property is leased to a private organization, it takes on the character of being a private organization. As we look, as I went back over the 2014 materials, I saw there was a lot of uncertainty as to what really the legal status was of the community centers. So the first point was to clarify that, to make sure that everybody was on the same page, because I think a lot of the disagreement over the extent of police details here is a product of people having different understandings of what the status is of the Sherburne Community The other key part of this thing is that has to do with how police details are assigned, which is paragraph six, paragraph eight. I should take my glasses off. The chief has to put his glasses on. I have to take my glasses off to read. But I've expressed for probably more than a decade the importance that the individuals who are assigning details should not be the ones who are eligible to get the benefit of a detail. That's one of the reasons why we had put in the chief's contract that he was not eligible to serve on these things. The idea behind that was so that someone like the chief, who didn't have a financial stake, would be the one making these decisions. And this And this then picks up the theme from that contract and from other discussions that we've had. So, with those, those are the two big additions. And then in paragraph nine, it's sort of a review of the history of the community center in terms of determining its suitability for events, and sets out the rule of thumb of a hundred attendees. If more than a hundred attendees attend, there should be, the presumption would be that there should be a police detail. If less than a hundred attendees, the presumption is there shouldn't be, but that if there was some specific reason, that the chief felt that there ought to be a detail, then he's certainly free to bring that to the attention of the board, to consider having a detail even with less than a hundred. So, that, the rest comes from the 2014 policy. That's basically what this is.
Paul, I had a couple of questions about the draft policy you have here. In paragraph six, it requires an application for the liquor license to be received at least ten days in advance of the event. Are those business days, calendar days? I would just specify so there's no ambiguity there.
Yeah, this was copied from the 2014 draft exactly, but certainly had the word. What word did you want?
I don't know, I'm interested in guidance from the chief on whether or not ten calendar days is sufficient, or if it needs to be ten business days, although I guess business days for a police department are seven days a week, but the, and the other suggested change I have is in paragraphs three and four, again, this is picked up from the 2014 policy. You have that the director of the community center should inform the town administrator of a proposed change in their policies, and they should inform potential renters that a police or fire detail may be required, and they should make potential renters aware of the estimated cost of such a detail, should one be required. If we're gonna implement a policy, I think this should all be mandatory. I think that...
Well, here's why I use the word "should" rather than "shall." They are a separate, we're a landlord, they're a tenant, and a landlord can't unilaterally amend the lease to make something mandatory with regard to the occupancy. So, if you wanted to go to a mandatory "shall," that would require essentially amending the lease, which I'm not opposed to amending the lease, and I don't think they would be opposed to amending the lease.
But until it's amended, it should be.
It's a matter of respect to a, to a separate organization, it's...
Fair point.
It's very hard to order people to do something. Now, if I try ordering one of my kids to do something, that's not often the most effective way of dealing with them.
And then, the overarching question I've got is, what are the comparable policies in comparably sized towns? And maybe it's hard to come up with a comp since the community center is, well, we're the owner, we're also the landlord, and the community center foundation has a long-term lease, but is the hundred attendees threshold, is that pretty consistent with what you or anyone else on the board has seen?
Well, it's consistent with what I've seen, and back in 2014, there was input from a number of departments, and several of them mentioned the hundred figure. I think there was one that mentioned seventy-five.
And this is set up as a presumption, though, it's not set up as a firm rule, and I think the reason is because we've had advice from the police chief and others that certain types of gatherings with certain types of service are more fraught than others, so...
If we had a meeting of the mafia, I would suggest we have one level of police detail versus a meeting of Boy Scouts, it would be a different...
Those are pretty extreme examples, Paul.
But it's intended to prove your point.
Yes.
Different events can have different characteristics, and of course, we wanna have the chief's advice on that.
Yeah. Which goes just a further point, at least for me to vote for, even to put, even if it's a presumption, an actual line, some kind of metric, like a hundred people in here, I'd wanna see other examples from other communities, 'cause basically, we're five people without law enforcement background, putting a number, taking certain levels of subjective nature of people with law enforcement background. Mafia people drinking spirits is gonna be different than Boy Scouts drinking beer. It's gonna be, you know, you could probably have a hundred of one, seventy of another, and even like thirty of another, where it has that.
I think the whole problem is Boy Scouts drinking beer, that's why we want...
Yeah, you may have actually...
We need a police detail for that exact reason.
I'm iffy on even, indicating a line in there, but if there's enough precedent where there's, you know, half dozen of the communities, I'll do the same thing, I'll have a roll of a hundred, I think, there could be something. But before I actually vote and agree to a certain metric here, I'd wanna see some precedent with that. The second thing is, I look back over the last year, at least May, since I've been on the board, and it might have been like four licenses that are under a hundred and got assigned a police detail to some extent, maybe one or two of those in the community center, which is why I kinda have an issue with really all of paragraph eight. You know, it cites the state ethics law, calls it a crime, obligates the select board to actually assign a specific individual in the police force that could actually can decide if there's details or not, all for the question of, are they inappropriately assigning overtime? So, we've had ten hours of overtime assigned this whole last year, and we're gonna kind of cite the ethics law and go through and make a policy around that? I just think this seems a bit unnecessary.
I'd like to hear from the chief.
Yeah, absolutely.
I had a couple of comments, too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wanna hear from the chief, too, so...
Yeah, well, there's some history here, too, which is, some of this is, I think, input from the chief in the past about, that there should be some type of rule of thumb, and he's applied a rule of thumb in the past. I don't know if it's a hundred or not, you can tell us that, but there have been, historically, it's been a lot more difficult to approve these licenses. There's been some tension between recommendations and what some, some on the board feel. So, if we're gonna have a policy, I agree, we should have the input of the chief, and I'm not really in favor of a bright line, I'm in favor of a policy. The other issue here was the ten days, and I know it's from the draft that David put together, but remember, we're supposed to approve these at a meeting. This is not something we can approve by email, we've been advised that by town council in the past. It's gonna be a pretty unusual situation where somebody on the spur of the moment decides to hold a party at the community center, they're gonna have to make those arrangements well ahead of time. We've found in the past that people would be late in completing their paperwork, and we'd get jammed up at the last minute. We might not even have a meeting. There have been times when, I was chair, when we were asked to schedule a meeting specifically for the purpose of approving a alcohol license for a party that the organizers had known about for months, but they hadn't bothered to apply for a license until the last minute. So, I'd like it to be a bigger number than ten, like twenty-one, something like that. We don't meet every week. We don't necessarily even meet every other week.
You could also do a minimum of so many days before the next selectman's meeting, so...
We could do that, too.
Yeah, I think twenty-one days would probably cover that. Yeah, the idea of calling a special meeting, too.
Well, we've been asked to do that, more than once.
Yeah, it's not a efficient use of...
What's the month we meet, once is it July or August?
August, we sometimes only meet once.
Because it could be a nightmare scenario, just to make sure that we get a couple days ahead of time, so the police can look at it.
George, did you have any? Rick, would love to hear your, your views on this. You were involved in the discussion in 2014, correct?
Yes, I was. Yeah, November twentieth of 2014, I was asked to do a presentation for the community at Sierra Eric, if you'd like to take a peek at it. I actually think I forwarded, I know I forwarded it to the town administrator, and there actually were thirty communities that I referenced, after sending out a email blast to my peers through the Massachusetts Police Association. So, first of all, I have to make a comment, and I'm actually a little insulted, frankly. At no time have I worked a detail in the town of Sherburne in the ten years I've been employed here. I'm intimately familiar with my contract, I'm very familiar with the state ethics law, and I just gotta, I have to say, I'm a little offended by some of this language. Having said that, I am not aware of any complaints received by the Sherburne Police Department at any time that we have suggested a detail for a private event at the community center. I've asked David in the past if he's received any complaints via the select board, and David?
Not that I know of, there was only one short, short-notice party that had come in one time, but it was, it was a short-notice party, but it wasn't a complaint made to us.
Right. And in addition to that, back in 2014, the town administrator and I worked with Frank Holt, as a matter of fact, I believe he was the chairman of the community center at the time, and he actually referenced this conversation when he was debating Mr. Johnson at the community center when he was running for selectman. He actually commended David and I, and for the work that we did with him, I believe what he said was, "For the safety of the community." So, for me, this has been a non-issue since day one. I brought my concerns to the board out of concern for the safety and well-being of the town. The board is responsible for signing off on liquor licenses, and it's not an uncommon practice for private venues, public venues, to have police details where towns are signing off on one-day liquor licenses. I work at your leisure. Mike, I think you hit it right on the head, I've said over and over, I'm not a fan of having a finite number attached to any of these events, because there are all types of events that, where alcohol is served, there are issues. And my, I guess my whole point would be that, as a risk manager, I'm doing my best to protect the town. So, from day one, when I was asked to do this presentation and share my concerns, nothing has changed for me. It's been an issue, Chuck, you mentioned it's been an issue a bunch of times during board meetings, it's been an issue that's been brought up by a singular person, as far as I'm concerned.
There's one other point here, which is, I think it's the police chief's obligation or opportunity, at least to recommend to us how many, whether there's gonna be a detail or not at a particular party after you review the license, and that comes to us, and then we make a decision, and our decision is either to accept your recommendation or not to accept your recommendation. And there was a period of time when there was a lot of discussion over those issues. I don't recall, in probably a couple of years at least, that there had been a lot of issues about those licenses, and I don't know if it's because we've made a little bit more of a regular process or not, but I don't, this is an issue that we were talking about a few years ago, this is kind of a new thing for us this year. I haven't seen this as being high on the list of public policy things we had to address. I appreciate the spirit of trying to put some guidelines together, but I'm just not sure we need to do anything right now.
I have, just have another question for Rick. When you're making a recommendation for a police detail, do you, are you always gonna require one with events with alcohol, or is it, is it kinda, you're gonna review it on a case-by-case basis?
No, no.
I just don't know what, when you're thinking, when you're looking at these, I'd just like to get an idea.
No, in fact, the, there was a singular complaint about a police deal, a police detail that I had suggested, and it had to do with a wedding party, and I did not know at that time that there was a second request to utilize the community center for a seventieth birthday party, which, where there's gonna be alcohol served. So, I didn't even have an opportunity to kind of vet that, that particularly planned event, but there are two separate polar opposite events there, right? I wouldn't expect a person that's having a seventieth birthday party with a, with a small group of friends and family to cause issues for the community, where you get a wedding reception, and you get several people there, and I've been there, I've been, I've had a few at weddings, so, you know, some things happen, so, I think that would be my answer.
So, it is a case-by-case basis?
Correct, and it has been, George.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, I just hadn't, I'm, since I've been on the board, we've never had a discussion about it, so I wanted to get, hear from you, your thinking as, when you, when you review these, when, it is, so it's not necessarily a number of people, it's the nature of the event?
No, and, by the way, and just so everybody's aware, I always communicate with either the lieutenant or one of my sergeants, and we kinda, you know, discuss what the event is, and we kinda brainstorm, and, you know, what do you think, what do you think, and, you know, it's, I, I, I'm not forcing details on anybody, that's never been my thought process, anyway.
Chief, this is the first I've heard that you've actually been involved in these detail things, because the paperwork I get always has been signed by Lieutenant Bento.
That's not true, Paul.
I'm familiar with your signature, and I'm familiar with...
Paul, you said "always," that's not true.
I didn't say "always," I just, this is the first I've heard that you've actually been involved. It looked to me like these have been, at least the paperwork that's come through, has been from Lieutenant Bento.
Not true.
It's good to hear that you're going to be doing this yourself, glad to hear that.
What's the pleasure of the board? This presentation from 2014, I'd not seen before, it looks like you surveyed about thirty towns, and flipping through it quickly, it looks like a number of towns have an even harder policy of just no alcohol on town premises. Those that do, I saw numbers ranging from seventy-five to one-fifty as a, as a threshold, but that looks like it was kind of a minority, I mean...
A couple of fifty, it was Arlington and Beverly Red fifty, even.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I didn't see Beverly, but I saw Arlington, so...
That's for town property, like this building.
Yeah.
I'm trying, one of the points I'm trying to make here is, community center is not town property, not in the same category at all, as like this building. This building's under the control of the town, so we have all kinds of different liabilities. When you've done a long-term lease, it's no longer classified as town property.
David, have we gotten complaints from the community center foundation board about the detail policy?
Sorry, we were...
I'm sorry, have we gotten complaints from the community center foundation board about the detail policy?
No, I think it's been running pretty good, and Genie talks to their, their person, and I think once that person understood what was going on on our end, it's been going fine. And then, that one wedding that was the late notice that I spoke of, I think that's the one that started the whole thing.
So, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want additional information? Do we want, does any member of the board have a motion on a potential policy?
I'll say in general, I mean, at least the recent policy, one just drafted, I wouldn't support it with paragraph eight in it or the fourth bullet of paragraph nine, unless those are either changed or eliminated in some fashion, I wouldn't vote for it, and maybe even the other ten days.
I'm sorry, paragraph eight, and what was the other section?
Fourth bullet of paragraph nine. Like, either look at the information, get an idea what's a better, what a better metric is, or just eliminate it, leave it to discretion.
I appreciate the thoroughness of Paul's effort and the thought he's put into this, I just don't feel like we have a problem or even demand for a policy at this point in time. I would keep these on file, and if it becomes a problem again in the future, somebody can pull them out and see if we need a policy, but I don't know that we need a policy right now.
I would agree with Mike, I kind of, I think the chief and Lieutenant Bento used their discretion to make this decision, and I'd leave it up to their professionalism to do that, I don't think we need to change anything at this point.
I mean, it goes beyond just the recommendation of the chief, though, it's also how you apply, and whether we have the right information, and for a while, that was...
And for a while, that was a problem. It was very haphazard. Genie has straightened that process out. So as a matter of practice, it's working, I think. Which doesn't mean you can't, you still record what's happening. But I just don't know that, this is starting to get a little controversial or, you know, difficult. And I'd just as soon say, we don't need to pick this up if it's going to be difficult.
Yeah, when I first joined the board, there was a problem with some of the certificates of life, insurance liability, where either the town, the Unitarian Church, or the community center foundation board, one or more was not named as an additional insured. I don't know if it's Genie or if it's the community center foundation board, but that simply is not the case. Last three years, I don't recall one that didn't have the liability insurance lined up properly.
And like I said, in the last year, there might have been two applications for the community center. We're less than 100 people. It feels like it's solving a problem.
Terrific. Well, if there is no motion, I think, in effect, we will keep this on file. Does anyone want to make a motion for approval of the policy?
Well, given that four of you have said not at this time, I'm not going to pick up the time of the board with a formal motion.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. No, you can have it.
You took his badge, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Like I said, you can have it.
What are you doing with the old badges?
I tried to grab the badge, but that didn't work, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the annual town meeting. And we're going to be looking at the budget and capital items for elderly housing, conservation commission, and building inspections. So Kitty and Joe, you're up first for the elderly housing budget.
Before we start on each individual budget, I just want to make sure, I wanted to kind of point out that Sharon provided us with kind of the overall master spreadsheet. And I want everybody to kind of keep that in mind as we're looking at individual budgets. It's important that we look at the big picture and say, you know, there's still, to reach the goals that advisory set with their guidance, there's still 200, I think it's a email today about 18,000 that needs to be cut from budgets if we're going to hit the goal.
It's a 41.
Okay, so just keep that in mind as you're looking at individual budgets, that there's an overall.
And I just wanted to also, elder housing is a revolving fund. So this is not part of the operating budget. So I had a separate handout for everybody, just showing you historically what we have, what has been spent for elder housing, and then there, the budget that they prepared.
Sharon, I have a question on this, the financial model.
Yes.
The large spreadsheet, line 45, can you explain to me what that, that means? It's got a cryptic entry. So.
That's the, that's the pinata. So basically, yeah. So basically, that's the part of it.
What's the pinata?
So what it is, is the budget guidance. And so the guidance says that each department shall budget for expenses flat. And compensation will be budgeted for at 2% COLA. We understand, or advisory understands, that there are circumstances that they must increase their budget. So they created a pinata of $400,000 as part of the guidance. And departments are allowed to, you know, submit more if they need it. But they may need to explain it at the presentations to select board and advisory. So that's what, that's the amount of cushion that we've built in.
So it's a, it's a fund to use for costs?
It's just literally like a line item that can be spread across all budgets.
It'll eventually get allocated.
That's beyond the 2%.
Yes, exactly.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Beyond the flat, that's not over, the 2% is the COLA. But the expenses are flat. And the initial guidance, the 400,000 is if you want to spend anything above your flat budget.
But it can also apply to salaries as well.
It could, it could as well.
It could, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Terrific. So which of our distinguished presenters is presenting?
I will start. I'm Kitty Sturgis. And I'd like to introduce Joe Meaney and Mike Kickem, who are members of our committee. And we have already put ourselves in session, because we're three out of the five. If I may take a moment, I thought I'd read my annual report that will be in the town report, since I wonder how many people actually open that book. But Genie does a great job when she puts it together. So if I may begin, Chuck?
Thank you.
I'm going to start by thanking members of the Sherbin Elder Housing Committee. Dr. David Curtis, who is our liaison with public safety. Mike Kickem, our treasurer. Joe Meaning, our building and maintenance guru. And Janet Walsh, who oversees the upkeep of the grounds. The teamwork of this committee is extraordinary. The town departments, we interact with Fire Chief Aaron Kenny, Police Chief Richard Thompson, Community Maintenance and Development Director Sean Colleen, Town Administrator David Williams, and Assistant Town Administrator David, excuse me, Diane Morris, who have been very responsive in time of need, and we are most grateful. Claire McKenon, the Principal of Slasby and Associates, who oversees the day-to-day management of Woodhaven, is an ever-present on the site or by phone. And the residents are encouraged to communicate directly with Claire when there is a problem within their apartment or the surrounds. Our 24 units are fully occupied. The early spring through late fall, the residents enjoy the pagoda near the center of the building complex. This past year, we had the misfortune to discover mold in our greenhouse. We remediated the problem and decided to stop using the space as a greenhouse. We are presently researching how we can best incorporate the area into our community room. In October, it was determined that due to this past summer's high humidity, heat, and moisture issues, followed by damp and wet fall, mold reappeared in the community room. This was unrelated to the greenhouse situation. The community room was closed. And as a further precaution, various areas within the entire building were tested. It was determined that the problem was isolated to the community room. The remediation has been completed. Solving exterior moisture issues and replacing the HVAC equipment is in progress. This situation has afforded Woodhaven the time and opportunity to analyze the community room and begin to replace furnishings that are suitable for senior living. The SEHC appointed a residence committee to research, evaluate, and the replacement of furnishings, paint colors, floor coverings, et cetera, to make recommendations to our board. As well as an effort was made to keep all the residents informed and their input, understanding, and patience was welcomed and appreciated. Our board can have up to nine members. This past year, we have functioned with five members, and this works very well. Our committee is fortunate to have an active participation of the residents at our meetings. The lines of communication are super. I'd like to now ask Joe to present our budget. And I believe it's broken into three, three or four pieces. The actual budget of running Woodhaven, the bond issue, and also our, we are part of the stabilization fund article. To, we are working towards having a fund so that if we have an emergency, we have funds available to keep the buildings in good shape. Or if, I guess that answers that question. I've spoken too long. Joe, it's yours.
Good evening. I think you all have copies of our budget. I can answer any questions you want, go into any detail you do want. But many of the things you've heard in the past, there's standard items. We show items, electricity, landscaping, building supplies, repair and replacement. I won't go through them all, but you can see some of them repeat year after year. But the big changes take place usually in what we call repair and replacement. So there's a major portion of our budget is there. It's, there's a lot of routine work that we're doing. Plumbing, repairs, handyman, miscellaneous carpentry. Some are easier to predict, some are very difficult to predict. But items you can see on that budget, which are major costs to us are, we intend to paint the exterior next year of all the buildings. And we've added automatic door openers to one building, to the front doors. We want to do the other two buildings. And then we also want to renovate the community room kitchen area. So those add significantly to our budget, and it's an increase over last year. The other items, there's nothing that really, I don't think, is a major change. As the building's getting older, like in our water treatment plant, we're spending more money now on upkeep and repairs. Some things like lifts and elevators, that can vary tremendously. It only takes one thing to go wrong, and it's a major bill. So that, the operating budget of this year, we, our committee voted on, $247,971, is up about $30,000 from last year, or this current year. But you can see that's mainly in the work we're doing in the repairs and maintenance. The debt service, we're paying, that's the number we get from the town treasurer. You can see that's been dropping. We've paid off a lot of the old money we borrowed. And we're left with what we currently owe on the bond we had for renovating apartments. So.
Is that a final payout figure? It's slightly, it's only $200 higher than last year? Or is it based on a variable rate, Sharon?
That rate came from Heidi?
If, I think I can explain it because I only noticed it recently myself. What it was, was up until this past year, we had money that was on short-term borrowing. So we were paying a different rate.
So they had.
This year, it couldn't, the remaining money that was short-term was put into a town-wide bond issue. And so it went to long-term.
Slightly different rate, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's just odd, normally you see that debt service just going down, 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 so.
Thought it was one of my mathematical errors at first, but.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
But, so that will continue to drop. On that item, we still have, that was for renovating apartments. We have 24 apartments. We've renovated 18 of them. We still have six left to go. So we still have $150,000 that we can use for those apartments. We renovated 18 of them in four years, and the last six were, we haven't renovated an apartment now since 2014, so. But anyway, that's 39.5. That's the total budget, or the total amount that we want to withdraw from our revolving fund. And again, as Sharon pointed out, it doesn't impact anything on the taxes.
The other comment is just to remind myself and everyone else that the, the maintenance, the repair and replacement, we've increased significantly over the last three years just because of deferred maintenance. So that's, it obviously goes up and down, but it's generally around the $100,000 threshold, so that.
Yes, some years we have something major we're doing, and others we don't.
I had a couple of things.
Yeah.
I'm friendly with some people there, and I go, go there every now and then. And there are two complaints that I get a lot, which actually, one is addressed. One is the kitchen. So I think glad to see the $20,000 there, increase of the kitchen. The other one is the cable TV in the common room. From my understanding, the cable TV currently is invoiced as a commercial building. And that's why it's $250 a month, and it's just basic cable. Like they said, at one point ESPN got cut off for them. So they couldn't watch sports down there. Is there any way to either up that or negotiate that it's not a real commercial use as a nonprofit organization? Do you know what I mean? Because I know it's meant for apartment buildings, which are for profit. And you have, you know, revenue you generate by having this. Is there any way, or a change to, change to Verizon from Comcast?
Claire, well, Claire McLennan, who was the manager of the property for us from Slasby and Shosage, has been dealing with Comcast on that, trying to get a change to a residential. Matter of fact, even just very recently, this week, they insist it's commercial, so.
Have you talked to Verizon?
Is it time to talk to Verizon?
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Yes.
Because we're free, you're, you know, there's no locked-in cable anymore. It hasn't been for years. And Verizon might make it worthwhile, especially if other residents start picking up. So they'll probably string a cable to the place because then they can start wiring in other homes. And people can start having more options. And it's not like, because that was our other complaint, because only Comcast comes to that building. They can, an individual resident cannot change a cable provider. But if you string another cable to it, then you can. And maybe they're making the kind of the commercial room that or something. Or just increase it like $100, you know what I mean, and get ESPN.
Well, getting the cable to the building is one thing. Getting the cables distributed through the building is a separate problem. It's difficult in that building because there's no space interstitial, intersicial, interstitial space in between floors. So it would be a lot of exposed wiring or get very expensive.
What they do, they actually use the Comcast cable to pull it through.
Do they? Well, then, well, maybe that could happen.
So they actually find where the Comcast comes in, and they tie it on, and it's actually pulling through.
And I know, we had talked to them about the telephone, and that's what we ran into with Verizon.
It would be nice, because the common room's used a lot. They do like it. I've been there, and I've actually watched football games there with some of the group, and it's fun. And they like it a lot, especially in the winter time, they can't go out there. And it's a shame when something that's pretty basic kind of starts getting cut out there. And I'd be willing to even allow a, an increase to the budget in the short term. Or David's going to hate me, have him, see if David could help the negotiation with Comcast or something like that.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to answer that.
Can I ask a quick question about?
Terrific.
Hey, Chris Hector, great luck. Does Comcast actually have a contract with Woodhaven? Normally, a multifamily, which you think of as a multifamily cable provider will have a specialized contract to provide to that building. And that's how they block the Comcast out of the building.
I can't answer that question.
What Eric mentioned, FiOS or some of the FiOS, what they usually do is they just feed back on the entire Comcast system. So they will actually run the FiOS to the telephone box. The line that goes down to the buildings, which is procedably a Comcast collect. And then they'll, as someone else mentioned, inside the building, Comcast line's already set up in all the units. And that's all, that's all from there. It's just regular tiles, like the tiles that the cable. So they can put a specialized FiOS somewhere in the building. But normally, like you say, a cable provider tends to look at those buildings as a contractual relationship, like a business relationship.
It's probably a question for your property manager, I would imagine. Because the property management companies are usually the ones negotiating contracts with cable companies with any other provider to the building.
We will follow up on that. And thank you for that suggestion, Eric.
Well, I did notice that the two capitalists on the board, George and I immediately said, well, how about a Verizon? So terrific, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you.
Kelly, yours, I think, is going to be a very quick discussion for the conservation commission.
Before we end, we're not taking any votes on this?
No, we're going to do this.
We're doing all the budgets at once. I don't want to vote on an individual budget when I haven't seen a few, I want to, I don't think an individual budget merits a vote until we've seen them all.
But don't we want to give sort of preliminary approval so they know that?
I wouldn't vote on any budget until I've seen them all. That's how advisory does it with their public hearing in March. I don't think it's appropriate to vote on a budget.
I think it's how we did, I think it's how we did it last year.
We waited and voted on all the budgets at once at the end. After we'd had a chance to review them all, right before the public hearing that advisory holds. Then we can look at it in a bigger scope instead of in silos.
All right, just so I understand the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Paul should have given you, yeah, because we talked about that, I think, a couple of meetings ago, so.
Okay, yes. Kelly McLiddick, 65 Woodland Street, Treasurer of the Conservation Commission.
And I hope you found our budget proposal boring. The staffing situation is extremely stable. We just have our.
We just have our very professional agent and assistant agent. Hours stayed the same for years. We would love to have them more time, but are able to muddle through this way. The field management, land management is level funded. There are always unexpected expenses and almost always unexpected savings. And we are able to keep it level funded and I see no reason why that would change, at least for the next several years.
Terrific, the, were, are the goats out of your budget for Barbara? Is that five-two-nine-oh?
The, the goats and a number of other expenses that don't show up in the budget are all thanks to, we're now actually in the fourth year of a state matching grant program.
Lovely.
This is a statewide program. Sherborne has received more money for more consecutive years than any other municipality in the state. They love us, they pay for the goats, they pay for our expert consultants. We match the grant with volunteer time.
Love those goats. Any questions up here?
I just, I'm wondering how, is it a zero-point-zero increase in compensation? Is that what you're proposing? That's what I'm getting out of this sheet anyway.
Um, no, it's, it's a two percent. That's, what, what's that saying is that, what, no, it's, it's zero, meaning that they met the guidance.
Percent increase, oh, that's just a guidance...
They met the guidance, yeah.
Percent increase over guidance, that's, that's going to be helpful.
Right on.
Okay.
But when you look at two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand twenty, it looks like it's the same number. Oh, yeah, that's, oh, now I see, a small...
There's a two percent increase, well, comes out a little bit higher because there's an extra page, money.
Right, extra...
Okay, okay, understood, thanks.
Yeah, you might, Sharon, you might want to add a new header for rows, excuse me, columns F and G, that it's compensation over guidance.
Okay, I will do that.
It reads identical to columns D and E, so...
Okay, I will do that, yep.
Thanks, Kelly. It was boring.
It was fascinating.
Okay, next is the building inspections. Chris?
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Chris.
So, I am making the horrible mistake of asking for money. Mostly, we are going with a level budget for all the normal operating expenses and salaries are at the two percent. I did propose a purchase of permitting software, which is getting to be something that we really need to think about. As a sort of big picture item for the town, we have obviously more files than we know what to do with. I think you've seen the selectmen's office and the file room up here and the cracks in the walls and ceilings related to the weight. So I'm attempting to ask for this software as a way to stem the tide of paper that's coming into the office, as well as provide some additional access and services to the public that they don't currently have. So this would be an online permitting portal that you could, you know, pull a permit from home, regular contractors have their information saved in the system and they just have to basically click a mouse a few times and they get permit. It provides mobile inspection logging, it provides us with a record-keeping system that actually allows us to generate reports and track growth in ways that we currently don't do. Just finding out how many electrical permits we issued in the last two years was a bit of a challenge, the way that we're doing it now. So this is, this is something that would really step us up into knowing actually what we're doing a bit more than we're doing now. Otherwise, there's a number of other benefits that the software provides. One of the biggest ones is that it provides us with a cloud-hosted place to put all of our records and legally speaking, we are allowed to keep digital copies of everything. So we can accept building permit applications with electronic plans, we can scan the back catalog of plans that are here that are taking up a great amount of space. Suddenly, we don't have to keep them on hand anymore. So for that reason alone, I'm super, super excited about the concept. It is relatively expensive, although not insanely expensive. It costs fifteen thousand dollars to set it up, which takes our existing Excel spreadsheets and imports it in and establishes a, the permitting portal and payment system for the town. And then it costs ten thousand dollars a year to operate, and it will continue to cost ten thousand dollars a year to operate. All of the IT is hosted by the software company, so we do not have to have an IT person managing it here, all of the hardware. And servers are managed by the software company again, so there's no personnel impact or equipment impact that the town has to purchase.
Which program is it?
It's People GIS, so we already use them for our GIS mapping, so it integrates with that software really well, too. So all of a sudden, where we're sort of using the base level of GIS mapping now, this will now populate the maps with permits that have been issued. This will provide a little bit more interaction with that map.
Is this going to be available on our website?
Yes, and everything's publicly available. So for public records requests, which now we have to go back and, you know, print out a spreadsheet and send it off to people, they can just come into the, to the system and view what's been going on in town and get information. So long-term, I think it's a, it's the way that the town has to go. I'm putting it on the budget this year for a couple of reasons. One is that we're standing on the footstep of, of the Fields, which is a thirty-two-unit development that we know is going, is coming this year and probably the next two fiscal years it'll overlap, but it's thirty-two units. Each permit's, you know, a little over two thousand dollars. There's, you know, close to seventy thousand dollars of known revenue coming our way that's sort of above and beyond the normal permitting that we would see in a year. Same thing goes with the remainder of fifty-nine North Main Street, there's eight more units there. So we're looking at about an eighty thousand dollar intake on development projects that are sort of above and beyond the normal run-of-the-mill permits that we do. So I would expect that, you know, our, our budget will, our revenue will at least show higher for the next few years. So it seemed like not the worst amount of time to try to absorb an initial capital outlay kind of for the software.
So the cost for the first year is thirty thousand?
So it's, it's fifteen to set it up and ten thousand to operate. There's an additional five thousand dollars in the budget for a large format scanner, which the town does not own.
What's the useful life of the scanner? What are you...
Usually five years-ish, maybe eight, you can push it. We have a large format plotter, so we can print, we just can't...
So going forward, talking like eleven thousand a year if we...
Yeah, I would say that that's not a reasonable amount to assume that at some point we'll have to replace that.
Two other questions. You mentioned, you, we could recoup some of this by adjusting the user fees.
Yes, and that's something I wanted to talk about. In my department, obviously, we take in fees for services, so at the moment, we are taking in more than it costs to run. We can adjust the fees also to sort of balance out some of this cost as well. So there's a number of ways to do that. Other towns have a technology fee, for example, related to online permitting. So if you're going to use the online system, they charge you a certain amount of money to do that. So if we took all of the permits that we issue in town a year and spread the ten thousand dollars out evenly, it would be like seventeen dollars a permit.
So if you're taking in more than it costs, how do you increase the permit?
Right, and so this is the question that the board and the advisory has to think about, is do you want to see an increase in permit fees where we're already sort of covering the cost with the amount that we take in? But it's, it's an option.
I'd like to see where our fees are compared to other towns for a commercial project. From what I've heard, we're not charging anywhere near the amount of fees on a commercial project.
We are, we did that two years ago and I don't remember, I thought, Mike, help me out, my recollection was we were maybe on the little high end. Our minimum fees are high, but our, our fees per thousand are really sort of on point. Ten, ten dollars per thousand for a community of this size is, is pretty average. Twelve dollars per thousand for commercial is a hair low for commercial, but it's, it's in keeping with a lot of other towns.
I wouldn't think you'd want to charge a premium to have people do digital because I think that would be more work for you and you want to encourage people to use the system, not discourage them to use it. So I don't think that makes a lot of...
I don't think he was going to give them a choice. I think he was just going to charge them for technology.
I know, but I'm saying like if you give them, if they could pay a lower fee and...
I don't think they'd pay a lower fee. I think the whole point is you add a technology fee.
Well, no, I think, I think this is a great idea. I think you need to move, you have to be doing this. This is a user-friendly thing that the town needs to deal with.
Most towns seem to have this around the...
It seems like that's the direction we're going in. And I just think with the amount of record-keeping that we have to do, we have to keep all the paperwork for the life of a building, and we're talking, you know, some buildings in town are two hundred years old, it's, it can develop into a lot of paperwork. So having a way to do it electronically, I think, is, is going to be huge.
I think this makes sense. I'd totally, yeah, support this.
So this is not just all new permits to be electronic, it's a scanning thing for all, all plans, permits, whatever we need to archive is going to be scanned in some fashion as like a tip or...
It gives us a way to deal with it, so that it, and now we have an organized system and we actually have the storage capacity that we can scan it. Right now, we have, you know, a town server. It's minimal as far as how much room is, that we could dedicate to, to big plans. This gives us a sort of unlimited capacity to take all the files that are in the flat files downstairs and scan them.
So that's my question, you're doing every, you're, everything archived?
Yes, it's not going to be immediate.
Going to be...
Yeah, it's not going to be immediate, but it's going to be a...
Scanned in under this, under this program here.
A long-term project.
My one thing is be a little cautious, because I'm dealing with this right now. Whereas the law's a little vague as to something that's an existing hard copy that was never originally electronic.
Yes.
Whether you can dispose of that hard copy or not.
Yes.
And I think the law's pointing at that, you can't. You might have to Iron Mountain it or something.
It becomes...
You can still use electronic as your day-to-day use.
Right, it becomes the Danforth Museum, as you know. But yes, we can, we can directly speak to council and find out exactly what we can and can't do with, with the building ones versus the...
And also, the second thing is, um, does this also include attaching the metadata so it's searchable?
Yes.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes, exactly. The other thing, too, is for the scanner piece of this, of the puzzle, this is sort of a joint effort between Sean and I, because Sean also has an enormous catalog of actually quite good mapping of the town roadways and things like that that should become digital. We need to do something with these pieces of information. If they're going to, they're going to get damaged, there will be a flood, something will happen and, and we won't have a road layout from nineteen sixteen anymore.
Have you presented this to advisory yet?
I just, informally, let's say. So I will be going before them next week.
So, so Chris, can this be shared with zoning board, planning board? I mean, there's a lot of boards. Most communities will either have the same system or a different system for their, for their permitting overall. It's, it's nice when it's one system.
Right, so this...
Click on something and bring up everything.
This software would have modules available for other departments if we wanted to use them in other towns where they've adopted this system. If it's a department that has a sort of a small number of permits coming through, there's, there's a way to sort of backdoor it as a building permit, if you know what I mean. So you're, we're not paying for an additional, you know, five thousand dollar license fee for...
If you have a variance or, or something for zoning board...
Right, so that's, that's what I plan to do with all the planning and zoning files, is to import them in as, as a sort of a different type of permit, but keeping it in the same system.
Yeah.
But it, basically what it does, it attaches all of the data that you input into the parcel ID, so you can see any permits that get issued of whatever type, and it, and it's all attached to that parcel ID.
And we put a good, good disclaimer on the website, so if there's missing information, everybody knows it's the best we could do.
It's the best that we can do, yeah, exactly.
But this then, you'd like, when, if you go to the assessor's website and look at the property card, would the permits be connected to that?
Well, there would either be a link at the assessor's site to link you over to it, or yes, usually the People GIS system, if you are in the assessor's, it links to the GIS map, GIS map links to the permitting system, they're all kind of integrated together.
And, and the assessor's system is, sometimes that's what houses those?
Correct.
Right.
So this draws on the assessor's database for, you know, owner information, parcel ID information. It works pretty well with a lot of other systems, so Wendy's thrilled about the idea of being able to immediately know the status of a permit, which she can't do right now without having to come and dig up a paper record. So the fact that she could say, I want to, I want to get notified when a rough inspection passes so that I can go and do a partial assessment, it becomes automated. She wants to know when a certificate of occupancy is issued, it becomes automated. The same thing goes with inter-departmental approvals are built, baked into the software. So if I need board health approval on a permit, it immediately pings them that they need to approve it. I need to find out that the collector's office has been paid, it pings the collector's office immediately upon application. It also reliably takes payments, which is kind of nice, so.
Terrific. Eddie, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, I mean, you can worry about David Thomas.
And who are you?
Papers and records in town hall. Have you talked to Gina with all about this? Do you know within town hall, we're closed and...
Right. Yeah, I mean, we, we mentioned that this was something I was trying to get going and it may not, it may not be the best way to do a planning board or zoning application through the system, but it is a way that we can manage the file part of it. So once the decision has been issued, all of the data can be dumped into the file that is attached to that property and kept there and be searchable by the public, which I think is important. But yeah, it's one of those things where depending upon how we format that software and exactly what types of permits we want it to be able to take, it, just sometimes it gets complicated when you have a lot of different things going on. But it's certainly possible that we'd be able to take applications that way, yes.
Chief Kenny?
So a question, would you be able to...
You need to identify yourself, sir.
Sorry. Eric Kenny, fire chief, Eric, kind of sure. Would you be able to do similar power, fire permitting, play every place, but using that thing?
So, yes, if you would like to, number one, sign off on any permits, that's already built into it, so that's easy. And if you wanted to be able to do, you know, twenty-six F permits, you want to be able to do open burn permits, in theory, yes, we could do all of those things through the same software.
So it'll take ten grand out of your budget for this?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think once you've got one package, you get a discount on the next one, but anyway.
Chris, so you were talking about increased revenue this, in two thousand twenty because of the...
Because we have these development projects in the pipelines and they're, they're really all right at the very beginning of getting permitted. So it's, it, as opposed to a normal year where I, I can tell you what we did the year before and I can tell you what you did the year before that and I can sort of guess where we're going to go, I can tell you that in the next year and a half, we'll be taking in eighty thousand dollars worth of permit fees from these two projects. And it's pretty reliable that that money is coming.
Internal revenue that you probably have to budget.
Yeah, right, I have not budgeted for that.
Kind of like as Wendy has done, you know, she keeps a limited growth number and it would...
Yeah, we had a one percent growth in local revenue, so, I mean, we could keep it that way?
I would, I would, to be conservative, I probably would.
Yeah, okay.
And if it comes in, it, you know, it's...
With all the forty B's, the numbers, the numbers are going to go up, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Chris, who does all this scanning?
Well, so that's the, that's the fun part. Me or Jeannie, for stuff that's coming in new. In Framingham, for example, we used either like senior help where they were working off, you know, tax bills. That was a great feature and it's a relatively easy process of running a piece of paper through a very big machine and hitting save. We actually also partnered up with Keith Tech in Framingham and we had a number of interns coming in from the business classes there and they would spend, you know, ten hours a week scanning and filing and hiding the, the big role plans off in a building that was far, far away.
And they changed their major afterwards and now they're doing something different.
Yes, yes, but I would hope that we could probably do something some more to help with some of the bulk scanning, but realistically, we're in such better shape as far as the number of plans that other towns have, we could probably tackle it in a couple of years.
Terrific.
Anything else? That is a great summary, Chris. Terrific. Do you have something?
No, I just think that's a great idea. I think this is, you know, a lot of times I'll question big increases, but this, I think is, and this isn't a permanent increase of thirty thousand per year, and I think this is well worth it, that's going to benefit the town in a lot of different ways.
It is a lovely year, but it's also recoupable, so...
Right, exactly.
Right.
Agreed.
Thank you, Chris.
Terrific, thanks, Chris.
Thank you all. Are there grants for this?
Okay, next is the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is your budget?
Yes.
Basically. The, I'm going to read what I handed out. It's got a bunch of bullet points and hopefully it answers any questions. This budget has already gone in front, oh, has not gone in front of advisory yet, but it is going in front of advisory next Wednesday night. Over the past year, Sean is facilities manager and Jeannie is admin support have taken on some responsibilities, which gives Diane and I a little extra time to focus on our other budgets such as the office budget. We're happy to report that we have not taken on additional staffing, nor are we making that request for this, for next year. In addition, looking at the current year budget of 287,957, current year expenditures are as expected with no surprises. The office has no outstanding past year bills and does not expect a need to make a reserve fund transfer request nor need a current year supplemental at the end of the year. We will continue to monitor the budget with Sharon through the rest of the year. Overall, our first submission of the FY '20 budget showed an increase of about 3% over the current year budget. We revisited several lines and their historical uses and compared to the three-year average and was able to reduce a few lines comfortably, resulting in a 1% increase in overall salaries and expenses over the current year budget. Salaries is up about $7,000 or 2.7%, which includes the 2% COLA on three positions, a $20 increase in the annual town report stipend and some calculating adjustments budgeting for 52.4 weeks. Expenses are down 3,950 or down 12.3%, which is a $2,700 decrease in office supplies, $500 decrease in legal advertising, $150 reduction in meeting seminars, a $450 reduction in postage, a $500 reduction in travel meals netting against a $500 increase in the cell phone bill. Our cell phones are procured through Verizon on a state contract and we are frequently in touch with our Verizon web as well as reps that can contact us from other companies so we can assess their promotions as well. One thing I wanted to note that in our, in FY '18, our appropriation for consulting services was $29,000 and we barely used it as the things we did get consulting services were able to be paid from other funding sources. We cut it in half for the current year down to $14,000. Since I was able to achieve some cuts elsewhere with no expected impact, I'd really like to not hit this line again until we have some sort of history showing that we're not using the 14,000, but I do plan to use them on certain small projects, certain small project consulting expenses. The impact of those changes result in an overall salaries and expenses budget request increase of $3,079 over the current year, which is a 1% increase. We do expect some budgetary changes to affect this budget. One of them is the technology line in town buildings is being relocated back into the select board office. I believe that amount is 25,000, so it would decrease the town buildings by 25 and increase selectmen by 25. Then the other issue is the approval of the sustainability coordinator position, which will be funded from this department and whether it is upfront in the select board's request or by reserve fund transfer request next year if the citizen petition article passes. We should make a decision right now whether we are going to include the ballpark expenses of about $28,000 to fund the position for 17 hours a week plus a small amount of office supply expenses added in. If you remember the presentation when this position was discussed, we believe there is a high likelihood that the position would pay for itself. At 17 hours, it would not be a benefited position. And to fill the position, we would need to get the personnel board to approve a job description, then it could be posted for hiring and at 17 hours, it's a small enough number of hours that it could be combined with an existing benefited position to create a position that has more hours in town hall with two funding sources. And then there, just a note about the ZBA budget, there are no changes and the legal budget has been kept flat at 80,000 after witnessing a modest increase in the budget amount from FY '18 to the current year.
Yeah, we'll just note the ZBA budget was not on the agenda, so we'll have to-
Oh, okay.
Put that on another.
Can I, can I make a comment about that though? I think last year we asked for budgets where there was revenue coming in through application fees. We asked to have that reflected so we could, we could see it in comparison to what the expenses were because it's misleading, and I mean zoning board's a small budget, but it is misleading to see a big number when it's really being offset by permit, application fees or other things. I'm pretty sure we asked to have some way of understanding that.
I can give you last year's year-to-date, I mean, last year's total fees.
Yeah, I mean, I just, when we, when we talk about a particular budget, it doesn't have to be this one, but.
I just want to talk a little bit about the, I think the other issue, which is fine, but the question you had about the sustainability coordinator that hasn't been approved by town meeting yet.
Right.
And I know that advisory is proposing a fairly large reserve fund for next year. I would, I would say until it's actually approved by town meeting, I don't think it's prudent to put it in our budget. That's my thought.
It's not in there, is it?
I agree with that.
It's not in there now, but, and I think we should keep it that way. I don't think we should put it in.
Yeah, until it gets-
Because I also wanted to base that a little bit, you know, I know it's not on the agenda, but I do want to talk, after we had that presentation, you know, is it going to be a sustainability coordinator or is it going to be a grant writer townwide instead of, you know, specific to what they presented? You know, I, I think it's too preliminary to put it into a budget.
Yeah, and I, I had the same feeling about the sustainability coordinator. We already have a number of departments, including the fire department, police department and the planning board, they get a lot of budgets.
Right.
So I'm not sure, I, the question in my mind is there added value? Are we already doing a good job with grant, grant reviews?
Right, so I just, I think on this, we just need to question whether to put it in the budget and I would say no. I think we leave the budget as it is and not include it.
Well, that gets to my question. There's a recommendation to have a human resources coordinator and wouldn't that be part of the selectman's budget if approved? And-
I don't think it's a recommendation.
Where would that be in the budget?
It would be in our office, but I don't, I don't think it's a recommendation for an HR coordinator.
I thought there was-
Is that what they, I think they're gonna talk about-
Government study committee. And so if that passes, would the plan, so there was nothing in here about that, nothing in your memo about that, so.
No, their articles are coming up.
So, would the idea be like what George indicated, that if that passes, that we would use the reserve fund to try and fund it at some later point, is that?
I think it would be a similar situation, that until something's actually approved and, and position established by both town meeting and a personal, personnel board recommending a certain amount for a position, I mean, it, I don't think we'd put something in a budget hoping that it gets approved by town meeting. I think we put a few budgets for what we have currently for our structure and that's what we leave, that's my thought on it.
Okay, so, and you think there's enough money in the reserve fund to take care of both this coordinator and an HR person?
I don't know anything about the, I'd have to, I'm waiting to get that-
But do we want to add to the warrant? Do we want to suggest adding that as a funding source if approved?
I think, yeah, I think as part of the warrant, we'd have to say, we'd want to say how that's going to be funded. Because I think it's also the IT coordinator thing that is part of this as well. So there's multiple positions being proposed in warrant articles and I think in the warrant article, it should probably address the funding of it because we shouldn't have addressed it in an omnibus budget for something that's not established.
Not been approved yet, yeah. That makes sense to me.
I agree. I wanted to just draw your attention to a, a note from Darren in the redlined version of his notes. And his comment regarding the article about the sustainability coordinator says, even if this article were voted as-is, there is nothing that would require the board to make such an appointment. Town meeting cannot direct the board as to how to exercise its executive authority.
It's a general comment with, with anything that town meeting does from a budgetary standpoint or even adding positions to the, to the bylaws for self-plan. The legislative branch, you know, amends, amends the plan, amends the bylaws appropriately to money, but it's an executive function of whether or not you decide to spend it on that purpose. You can't spend it on a different purpose, but you don't have, you know, just because money's appropriated, you have to do it. So that's all that comment. The comment was not advising you should or should not do it, it's just saying that even if it passed at town meeting, it's still only up to the executive branch of whether or not to decide to want to add that money, spend that money appropriately.
Well, that's why I'm raising the issue of money. So it comes, let's say town meeting votes for these two positions and it comes to us and we have no money. I'd rather make sure that as we do the budget, we make sure that there is the capability either at town meeting with an amendment or if these articles pass or thereafter to actually implement what town meeting might vote.
I don't think it's an appropriation in the omnibus budget, I think it's an appropriation in the warrant article. I think you appropriate the money in a warrant article saying how that position's going to be paid for. I, you, I mean-
Well, we'll talk about it, but it's, the HR thing is kind of in between, actually. The town already has a human resources director. It's part of the town administrator's job description.
Job description, please.
Through the chair. Listen, every town meeting's different and every town's different. What some communities do, they, they, sometimes it can be how you sequence the articles. You may decide that the best sequence would be to have these articles prior to the omnibus, the omnibus budget because therefore if they pass, you can make whatever amendments you need to in the proposed budget. It depends, other, I've seen other towns pass the, the main budget, these things pass and then before town meeting closes, they reconsider the budget and they amend those.
I think we've actually held, Jeff walked in at an ideal time. I think when I was on advisory a couple of times, we actually held items in the omnibus budget until after a warrant article was approved and then went back and revisited those individual items within the omnibus budget with an amended amount.
Yeah, that's correct.
That we, that's what we've done in the past. So I think we'd leave the budget as it is now and then if the warrant article passes, maybe on the floor, the omnibus budget gets revised.
I give you an example where that's going to be used. I think, you know, Mary Wolf was on the, whatever you call it, voting thing. And so they want that to be in the budget, I think, so that we have it every year, but it has to get approved.
Right, what we're talking about is the HR coordinator or say the sustainability coordinator, those kind of things.
Same time then.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, that's, we should definitely do that. I talked about that with Mary already this year for that electronic voting or whatever they call it, because that would be a budget item to make for the voting at town meeting, but we have to get a warrant to approve it before it's being in the budget.
Any other questions up here about the select board or the legal budgets?
I just want to clarify still that it's not, we're not adding positions even if those articles pass. It's, they're authorizations to designate somebody if needed.
Right.
We move along on this.
Terrific. The next budget is the police department. Chief Thompson, please.
We get legal?
I thought you did legal in your executive summary.
I didn't have any comments.
We're level funding it?
I didn't have any comments.
I don't either.
And no.
Comments on legal budgets? Okay, let's-
Okay. It's like snow.
Snow and ice here.
Things work like cocaine defense budgets.
I don't really have much to, to say about my budget. There's only a few minor items where we're increasing in our budget. And actually, Sharon disappeared on us. There was a correction made today in the budget. There was a $5,000 line missing for our embedded clinician. For some reason, that was not in, in the budget. Lieutenant Bento and Sharon picked up on that today and they corrected that. He's talking about that $5,000 for the, for the clinician.
We don't have an amended budget?
Is that in the, the version that you handed out today?
Yes, it is, it is.
It's in the book already.
It's in the book?
It's in the book, yes.
Is the, the budget dated 1/31?
Mm-hmm.
What's the issue?
There was an earlier version that had a $5,000 line item that was not included for clinician.
What, you meant for the embedded clinician that we, we share with Ashland, Hopkin and Hollis?
Do you, do you remember what line that was on? I'm sorry, I'm just-
I'm sorry, too. It was 5580.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Other expenses?
Yeah, the budget you have in your book is the correct budget that we worked on today.
A few other things I just wanted to point out for the board, obviously, and for our community members. We've shifted the, our gas line, our fuel line in, into Sean Cline's budget. CM and D is going to take over all fuel for town vehicles.
It's highlighted in yellow.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But your budget was pretty much flat, other than that's a, you increased another, I guess it's a small amount, but it-
Yeah, the, the only other increase that we have here is for a new equipment and I had a few attachments. We're looking to purchase that Everclean sanitizing product. We've been having issues over the PD with officers and, because all the excess hours they're working, we're passing all types of flu and cold and whatnot. So there's a Fox 25 special on it, I think it was last week, where Brewster Ambulances was sharing that they use this product to clean out their ambulances and whatnot. So I had the lieutenant reach out and we got an estimate of roughly $1,300 for the product in a year's worth of sanitizing tablets, so something to-
I have a question just in general on, on the salary portion with the overtime. I know we've talked about it when I was on advisory, we've talked about it over the years. Is there any way, any staffing changes you could make if there was, whether it be additional officers that would significantly reduce overtime, somehow to reduce that? Salary number is huge and you know it, we all know it. Is there a way that if there were additional officers or part-time or anything like that, that it would reduce that overtime number?
I've been suggesting that for the nine years, nine and a half years I've been here, George. And we are currently working with Kim Craven from Public Safety Solutions to provide a cost-effective analysis, a cost-effectiveness analysis for the police department. It's just taking time for her to collect data. Yes, I mean, it's not a secret that the overtime budget is ballooning, we're minimally staffed. It's, it's creating, it has been creating a health issue for my personnel, which is concerning to me and, you know, we all should be concerned as a community about officer wellness. If the officers aren't doing well or not feeling well, then they're not going to be providing, you know, the best possible service to our community members. So, yeah, we're aware of it. I've discussed it over and over, I've, I've discussed it with Stephen Si, my, one of my liaisons, and we're just simply waiting for this, what was she saying? She was going to give us a- She was supposed to have rough numbers for us last month. Yeah. It's just taking time.
So, so can we anticipate potentially looking at for, I know it's not, this, this budget's set for this next year, but-
Correct.
Looking for '21, when you come in next year, we can really have an in-depth discussion about where staffing levels should be that could potentially save town money by reducing overtime and making your department run more efficiently.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it ties into, George, and, and, you know, you sat on advisory, I've explained this over and over, that it ties into recruitment and retainment and, you know, the morale, the personnel. I don't like telling officers that they can't, you know, have their vacation days off or they can't take time off because we're, we're not staffed properly. And if the, if the board is not aware, we have an officer that suffered a very significant injury off duty and it's very possible that he could be out for up to a year. So, and, and I've explained that over and over, because we're minimally staffed, we, we're at, we're a risk here. So if somebody goes out and now we gotta replace that person, the overtime is going to go this way.
Well, I look forward to seeing that, like after the report comes in, you know, even in between now and this time next year, we can have discussions about where the staffing should come in next year.
Absolutely.
I think that's, I think it's an important discussion just based on where we're seeing the salary number for your department, I think it could be more efficiently distributed.
I agree, I agree, 100%.
Chief, at the last meeting, we were looking at a, expenses for tree cutting and it included about 30% of it was for, for details. That's not in your budget, right? That comes out of the CM and D budget, the cost for those details.
Correct.
My understanding, I just want to make sure I'm not making a mistake.
Correct.
So the overtime paid is not for the detail?
No, it's, it's two separate, two separate. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up.
It's a separate budget.
That's a good clarification, I just, just to add the clarification.
I watch, I watched the January 17th select board meeting, actually I communicated with Mike a little bit about some of the things that was said and we actually did a year and a half long audit, here it is, on all the detailed requests that we've received and, you know, for the police department, both public and private. And I, I will certainly forward that to the board if you want to spend the, probably hour peeling through it. peeling through it.
But one important point on that is not all the details on the police, on the tree money, our Sherburne police details.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not an additive process where you look at it and you say, this is the budget for salary, and then there's this additional budget for detail? That's not the way it works? Right.
Yeah, in fact, just from eyeballing it, it looks like a lot of them are from state environmental police, out of town, I mean, just because there's so many.
There was, there was a three-month period where literally we were getting detail requests, 29, 30 police officers a day, that's twice the size of our police department.
Yeah.
So, and again, that's wear and tear on my personnel. I don't want them working all these hours. It's not healthy for them.
Are you getting, do you have a good response from the neighboring police departments to fill these details?
We do. In fact, you know, I've had this conversation with my peers, and I had a long conversation with the chief in Framingham, and he was shocked to see just how many details we're able to fill with such a small police department. Our numbers I have in there, we're able to fill over 95 percent of the detail requests we get. That's unheard of.
Anything else up here?
No.
Terrific. And on the capital side, it's...
Not asking for anything this year. I did want to, you saw those emails chalk you up.
I saw that. I was just going to note that there's not a cruiser this year.
No cruisers, yeah.
But there would be two next year.
Two, correct, correct.
But you have new stickers on these.
Beautiful new stickers, absolutely.
Now we have stickers for our cars.
Yeah, you have stickers for your cars, and those are not get-out-of-ticket free stickers, just so you know.
So you're finally ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think we are up to item four on the agenda.
Wow, already?
Yeah. Edition out, Mike. Consideration of the 2019 annual town meeting warrant. David, you want to tee this up? I know we got the governor's task force up.
Yeah. First, I'm happy to report that we're like 98 percent done with the whole complete warrant, and you have the most recent copy. You also have a redlined version with Darren's notes, and then you have a checklist that's been updated to match.
Do we have an extra copy of the red line?
Yeah.
You want one? Never mind, Mike found his.
Do you need one?
Yeah.
So you'll be able to use this document when we're talking about articles. So in regards to the task force's articles, they wouldn't have seen Darren's comments yet, because they just came in, so he changed the article a little bit, but not the intent of the article. So we will get those copies of it, too. Other than that, I'd like to eventually, after, before we leave tonight, go walk down through the warrant checklist, and let me update you on which articles were removed, which ones we're kind of questioning on whether we should remove or not, and then just any other updates on that sheet.
Who removed them?
I did. I deleted them.
We haven't agreed to have anything on there yet.
I understand, I'm just trying to figure out the criteria by which articles appear or don't appear. So this is, the board hadn't decided?
No.
No. We haven't voted on it.
The board has not voted on anything. I don't even understand how some of the language got here on things that are supposedly from us, but... So in the meetings that I missed, the board hasn't gone over the warrant before?
They voted articles 13, 23, and 24.
Over here, Paul, is where we voted on them. Those are the only three that we voted on.
And those weren't, those weren't positions of the board, those were votes to include in the warrant.
So that's the accessory apartment by law, the CSX rail trail, and the change name of CM and D to DPW.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not the same number.
So the ones that you took off, how do we know?
Something different.
I mean, how do I know, maybe there's something in there that I think should be on? How do I know which ones?
Well, since the last version, there was the removal of the creation of Affordable Housing Trust that was being carried forward, and that was a placeholder.
It's the accessory apartment.
Nobody, I don't think that's ready to go right now.
Where's the blight?
Natty May was putting her on the spot.
So why is that 21? So that's what I'm saying, what's gone in here?
Is it fair to say that it's not ready to go right now?
David, this list is not the same as the warrant you gave us, so the numbering is completely different.
Mine do.
But before we get into a discussion of a particular article, I just want to know what articles were removed. The Affordable Housing Trust.
Personnel admin plan, the article for that, and then removal of the unpaid bills article, that there are no unpaid bills.
And the placeholders we had in place for 41 North Main.
Previous versions, half the warrant had placeholder on it.
David, I'm just, I'm still hung up on this numbering, and how the numbering is different on our checklist than it is, which was dated today, than it is on the warrant, which was marked up yesterday. Completely different.
I think the blight...
The warrant still includes Article 10, which is Dover Sherburne Regional School District, and you said, Diane, building for the meeting, that they do not have a capital item this year, so I think that's one that should be removed from the warrant, but the number, that's one change in the number right there.
Mm-hmm.
That's, my copy hasn't removed.
The summary.
We're looking at the red line.
Well, yeah, Darren got the full one from the last version. We haven't taken his notes out of, the redlined version is not going to be accurate with the checklist.
The clean version matches, okay.
Yeah, I didn't realize you were looking at the red.
I was looking at the comment version, because Chuck told me to do that, so I... So when we took 41 North Main off, that was to put it off to another year?
I thought they took it off.
They requested not having it. The latest proposal was a huge change. It was, in my opinion, it would not be anywhere near ready for the annual town meeting. We had a discussion, thought that it was an important enough project that if we go forward, it would be at a special town meeting, and it was, as George said, it was at their request as well.
They weren't ready.
Okay. So it's...
It's off for the annual town meeting.
The annual town meeting.
Okay, good.
Open issue whether or not there'll be a special town meeting.
Okay.
A couple of the other changes that we've done is, if you look at the capital items, we tried to combine, if you look at the capital item for breathing support equipment, before that was two separate lines.
We took out the police, there were two police cruisers.
We took out the police cruisers. And then the pickup truck with plow and toad blower, those were two separate lines before. And I would like to add the water tank brine sprayer in there, and just call it, you know, highway equipment, truck and highway equipment.
That makes sense.
But it does.
I think, I mean, if Sharon thinks of, or the treasurer thinks of, you know, it's Katty, I think, is...
George is having trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry, if items are of a similar nature, I think they're fine, but I don't, you don't want to group, I think that was a problem we had a little bit with the town buildings, right, Sean, that we had some items in there that were just completely different, so the timing of bonding some of these things, it's hard to group a few, some things, I think.
I look at it as a truck, and there's a plow in the front, and there's either going to be a blower towing behind it, or a water sprayer.
Okay, so it attaches to the truck, then that makes more sense to me. But if it was two totally different pieces of equipment, then...
No.
They're all similar in life, too.
What, oh, they're similar in life, okay, then yeah, combine them.
Okay.
Not like one of them's a 25-year life and one's seven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I have the issue, I think, when things are completely different.
Okay.
It's just the red line is different.
We can combine those two lines. Town buildings, Sean and I had kicked around all kinds of different numbers. I think we had talked about 500,000 at one time before, and right now, we plugged in 325,000. The town buildings hasn't gone to advisory. It did go to Capitol Building Committee tonight. I'm not sure what happened there. The Pine Hill school number is in here, 75,000. There's no regional school. That was, their capital article was taken out.
I suspect he didn't, was it two?
On Article 10, the use of free cash.
And Article 18.
It didn't get brought down, so it isn't...
Yeah, that happened, apparently that happened today.
On Article 10, the use of free cash, you should look at Darren's notes on that.
Darren's notes, it's Article 11.
Basically, there doesn't appear to be a need for a separate article in the use of free cash, because you already have those approvals in the capital articles and the omnibus budget articles.
But it's tradition in our town to have this article, so is there an advantage to removing it?
There's not, there's not an advantage to removing it. We were just pointing out, again, it's not something you have to do, but we certainly defer to town tradition. It doesn't hurt you to do it.
I mean, I think of it as a tradition, I don't know, I don't know the reasoning of it, but...
It'll shorten the meeting by five minutes.
I don't see a reason not to take, I mean...
Okay, that's fine.
Unless, I think if you were using it, I think if advisory was using it, using, in the past, they've had to use free cash to supplement the omnibus budget, I think you, I guess you would actually save in the omnibus budget, so you wouldn't even need it there.
Right.
I don't see why you would need, I think we've taken it out. I think it makes sense to take it out if we're not...
That's what we're pointing at. We're not, we're not trying to trample on town tradition. It's just something you don't need to do or have to do. You can do it just as part of your...
Because it's available funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you would specify, ultimately, there's going to be a motion, and it's going to specify exactly where the appropriation is coming from, so you would add a phrase to the motion and X amount of dollars from free cash.
So it's not going to save five minutes, it's just going to move the five minutes under Article 8 instead of 11?
It'll still save five minutes.
Thank you.
One less article.
It's printing costs. Thank you, counsel.
So should I take that out or not?
I would take it out, unless anybody feels differently.
Yeah, I would take it out. To me, it's a budget argument, it's part of the omnibus, so I'd just, so...
Okay.
I'll abstain, so I don't care.
You don't care?
Yeah.
Paul, do you have an opinion?
I don't care either, I just don't want some voter to be upset that something was different, and we're up to something.
It's not, they're going to hear about free cash a lot earlier.
I wish we had a retired town moderator that could weigh in on this.
I think there are three people that will notice, and they won't care.
Corey has my proxy, so I'm...
Elliot, tell him he won't care.
So I could take it out.
There's, the Adopt Community Preservation Act is still in here. That is the only one, other one that I could identify that I didn't, wasn't sure which way it would go as far as ending up in your final warrant.
There's one other I wanted to ask you about, David, which is this blight one, which I know came from a conversation you had with me, but this is way, way, way beyond what we talked about, and I'm not sure where this language came from.
Which article are you talking about?
The blight article. I think this one, this one has absolutely no chance of passing in this form.
Which is the blight, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't support it.
I think it's the new...
Well, it's Article 23 in one of them, and Article 21 in the other one, so... If I could, I felt it was quite different than anything I heard, particularly the requirement for everybody to keep their property in good order. This is, this is like a way over the top property rights issue. It wasn't even a blight thing, to require everybody to keep things in good order, and I was thinking, what is good order, and are we going to have a good-order police driving up and down streets saying... So can I mention, this is, this came, I think this came from a conversation I had with you, David, is that right?
From Prospect.
Which was based on somebody who had contacted me about trying to do something to keep from having, basically abandoned construction equipment on a property that wasn't being actively worked on under construction, because that's a blighting influence on the area, something the neighbors didn't want to see. That's a very, very discreet issue. I would say we should draft an article that addresses an issue like that, rather than this, which is, and I understand you probably borrowed this from someplace, and there are communities that have put this forward, but this is a real intrusion on property rights, and it's a very, very heavy-handed approach. There are procedures by state law to deal with abandoned buildings, or buildings that are so dilapidated that they create... This is not a building issue, though, it's just a construction equipment issue that the people complained about. They, apparently, there's a project that's underway, where the equipment's been left there, but there's no work going on, so it looks like... Like the library? It looks like, maybe that was the one they were talking about, I didn't even think of that.
No, it's not, the library, and Chris...
That was good, Paul.
That was good, Paul. And Chris has been working the, that specific issue.
Yeah, but in any case, that was, that was the request, and I support the request to at least air it out through this process, you know, whether I would support the language at the end, but I certainly wouldn't support this. I don't even think we should, I mean, I want to burn this, because it looks like it comes from the selectmen. We, I mean, yeah, you can take it out, but...
Yeah, I agree, this looks like it's...
Well, I don't think we should remove it, I think we should keep the placeholder and put in language that just addresses the issue that was supposed to be addressed.
Right.
Through the chair, we were just asked to provide some examples.
Understood, yeah.
But you're right, we haven't been involved in the discussions to know...
I know you would never actually advise somebody to pass this, this is just language.
Exactly.
Okay, good.
Yeah, this reads like it came out of Santa Fe, with everything other than, except for the choice of colors.
Santa Fe, but some other Massachusetts.
Yeah.
But we also noted in the comments, there's been some difficulty with enforcement.
Yeah, and...
So it was really just a sample to, nothing more than a sample.
Yeah, no, the thing I think we need is probably three lines or five lines, or much, much less than this.
I had thought...
No, no, that's okay, it's okay that you did, I'm glad I noticed it.
Yeah, at first I thought it was a zoning article, and you said it's not zoning, and yeah.
No, I mean, I've seen plenty of these out there, there's lots of them out there, but that's not what we want.
Okay.
So, and I think we should retitle it, because it's really not nuisance blight.
It's...
Storage of construction equipment? No, that's probably too narrow.
Well, again, there are procedures already in place that deal with blighted and abandoned properties, and the Attorney General's Office has been working with communities, and I'm involved with... That's not what we're talking about here. ...ordinating, where there are properties that are truly a blight, and so there's a difference between a blight bylaw, which probably isn't needed, and one that says that citizens and property owners have to maintain their property to some standards, so... We're not talking about either of those things, though. We're just... That's what we have here. Understood, that's what we're saying, we don't want to have this here. But what we do want to have is something that says you can't keep your bulldozer on a property that you're not working on for more than six months, or whatever the time period is that these people are complaining about. So why don't we take those words and use that as the placeholder, as opposed to the words that are here? Perfect, that's exactly, we agree, we're just saying it differently.
We did know that under your current zoning bylaw, and again, the big problem is we don't know the specific facts, that you may already have something in place that would allow the building inspector to come in, depending on the fact...
He seemed to think he couldn't, according to what I heard, that he did not have a basis for enforcing, so...
Well, we noted that there might be an...
Okay.
I mean, he's met...
I think we need to get more details, I mean, there's been some emails, but I think we need to probably dive into it a little more.
Good, thanks. But the idea was to stop the storage of construction equipment on a project that has ceased.
Paul was right, he nailed it, it's basically the library only on a private property.
So why don't we leave a placeholder?
The library the way it used to go, now the way it is now.
I think you guys are willing to talk about there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Work on it.
So the governance...
Addy, did you have one thing you wanted to ask?
Yeah, we could have it. Can we have the placeholder for governance task force? I mean, for the hunting trust placement, if something is needing, let me just, I'm waiting-
Is it on there?
I mean, after it's laid, I want to make sure.
Okay.
Before we take off, I just want to make sure.
Okay. If you promise to get back to me and let me know what you guys decide.
We have another one next week, so.
Next week, maybe on seven. Let me just make sure that I got the right answers first.
Okay.
It was in there when we closed the warrant, right?
Yes, as a placeholder. So the governance task force articles, there are four of them, and they're all grouped together, three quarters of the way down the warrant.
What numbers are they in the markup? Seventeen, oh, in the markup.
In the markup, they're nineteen through twenty-two.
Hunting bylaw.
And in the blacklined version, they're seventeen through twenty. Or do you want to grab a fourth chair and move up to the, the table there?
Is there an extra copy of the markup thread?
Good evening. First, I'd like to introduce the three other members of our committee that are here tonight. Our fourth member, Erin Carroll. Poor child, is it the super, is it the super rule? She's in Atlanta.
And she's an Eagles fan.
Isn't that all? What a waste. We have Adam Page, we have Greg Cannon, and we have Addie Mae Weiss. And it's, it's been a terrific group. It's been a pleasure to work with them. I thought that what I'd start off doing is very briefly summarizing our methodology, what we've been working on, where we are, and where we're planning on going. And then we'll talk about the four warrant articles. And then if we have time, there's been a great deal of interest on the townwide survey that we did. And Adam is really the inventor, the godfather of the survey, and he'll do a brief report. We haven't had time to really analyze the data from that yet, but he can give you a preview, a trailer, of what the survey has yielded. So we began with talking about what we wanted to do, and we came up with a three-part plan. We kind of worked in threes. We had some core values that we enunciated in the beginning. One was that we wanted to focus on jobs, in particular jobs, in the, and functions in the structure of town government, rather than individuals who filled the jobs. Secondly, we were particularly interested in efficiency and workflow, particularly in town hall. And third, we were interested in responsiveness to citizen concerns and communication. So we began by interviewing all of the, we all divvied them up, all of the chairpersons of the town boards and committees, and we also interviewed the heads of all the departments. We had a standard list of questions that we asked, essentially, you know, who do you supervise? Who do you report to? What committees do you interact with? What works well? What doesn't work well? What extra resources do you need to do your job better? Because we were interested in continuous improvement. After we did that, we sifted through all that data, and we came up with a list of about a dozen issues that seemed to be consistently remarked upon in all those interviews. So then we did, part two was, we looked at how other towns handled those particular issues. And instead of looking at the towns that were frequently aspired to be, that are in our neighborhood, like Waylon and Weston and Dover, we actually decided that government structure was more a function of size. So we actually looked at the ten smallest towns in Middlesex County, of which we happen to be number three. So we looked at those ten towns, and we divvied them up once again and interviewed them about these twelve issues that we were looking at, got some feedback from them, looked at the various ways that they'd handled these issues. And then we, part three of data collecting was doing this town survey, because we thought that the people that we had not talked to so far were the citizens. And it was intended to be kind of an, to some degree, general feeling survey. It's not going to give anybody data for a PhD thesis, but we wanted to have some general information. And it's, it's been very interesting. We haven't really analyzed it yet. When we have, it's, it's scheduled for public release, but you guys can get a preview of it. Then when we had sort of narrowed down these twelve issues, we divided them into three categories. The first category was things that we thought were town meeting-worthy. The second category was things that we thought were select board issues that the select board itself, if they cared to act on them, could take care of. And then we had the third part, which was kind of general issues, that it's our intent at the end to do kind of a general report, that we thought that we would, those issues would fall into that general report. We've sort of talked about, is there a possibility of going to year two? And haven't signed on yet, but those general report issues might work their way into year two. We don't know yet, and we don't even know if we're going to have a year two, but we've talked about it. So we've got the four warrant articles. I think they're in front of you. The first one is quarterly tax payments. And the, we have dealt with this before at various town meetings. The payments would be due, obviously, four times a year. The payments due on August 1st and November 1st would be estimated, and then those in February 1st and May 1st would be the reconciled tax rates to fill out the year. It is our intent, recommendation that this would, we would delay the implementation of this one year, which would give people who are seasonal income earners, for instance, agricultural folks, a year in order to adjust their income savings, so that they would be prepared for this first quarter payment. The last time this issue came up, we did have some pushback from some of the agricultural people in town who were worried about the fact that they would not be prepared for an August 1st due date on the first quarter. So this would give them a year to prepare for that. And it would also give the town collector's office a year to prepare for how to address issuing quarterly tax payment coupons. We looked, in the course of the work that we did, we went back and looked at the Collins Report, we looked at the DOR Report, and we also looked at the report that came from Strategic Accounting, which I think was initiated when the position of the finance director was created. And they had some specific recommendations about if we went to this quarterly tax billing, and some suggestions were putting two coupons in a mailing so that our number of mailings would not change at all, to use the media to remind payers that there was a change, possibly to outsource printing and mailing of the bills, which would free the collector for more necessary functions, since that is essentially a basic clerical function. And we also looked at the, oh geez, I lost my train of thought. Well, then we looked at the outcomes of what would be accomplished by this. The most obvious one is that it smoothes the income flow, the cash flow, through the four quarters. And that's a particularly important thing for two reasons. One is, in the beginning of the fiscal year, there tend to be capital demands that are made on cash immediately in July, when we don't really have, we're not flush with cash. And secondly, the snow and ice comes up in the winter between the November payments and the May 1st payments, and this would give you a February 1st payment, which would give us some income through that. It also, we do have, not every, doesn't happen every year, it's happened twice in the last five years, that there is a turnback from the regional schools when their E and D exceeds 5%. And if, under our current arrangement, we cannot factor in the fact that we've gotten that turnback in, in time, to adjust the tax rate in order to reflect that. And so we wind up actually having to tax for the money that we would, we will be getting back otherwise, so we wind up with a double income piece on that. And if we went to quarterly tax billing, it would allow us to factor in those turnbacks that would happen. The last time it happened, it actually affected the tax rate by about eight cents, so that that, you know, would have a significant impact on what's going on. It also reduces internal borrowing, which we have done on occasion, and, which is obviously a legal procedure, but it's a, it's a hold-your-breath, nail-biting procedure, because you hope that you've borrowed from some bond income that you've had, that you hope that the tax revenue comes in in time to actually cover the expenses that the bond was issued for. And we have done temporary external borrowing, and I've got kind of the rundown for several years about what we've paid. We've paid anywhere from $2,000 to $10,000 in interest on the external borrowing that we've had to do. And it also aligns with the practices of the ten smallest towns. The ten smallest towns all have quarterly tax payment, except for us. We're the only outlier. So that's number one. If anybody has any questions about that?
Just one thing to point out, that we did, this fall, we were talking about potentially needing a tax anticipation note, but when we borrowed for, what was it? We borrowed for a capital item. We borrowed for the whole thing, for the fire truck, but we weren't going to need it yet, therefore we didn't need to. So when people say we didn't borrow for tax revenue, well, we kind of did, because we had the, we borrowed it from a capital anticipation note instead. So this is something from when I was on advisory. I think it's a no-brainer that we should have, I mean, based on the Collins recommendation a long time ago, this is something that we really need to do. And I think for a lot of taxpayers, it really doesn't affect them in any way, because their mortgages have a tax, have a tax escrow that the bank's just holding on to your money. You might as well give it to the town instead.
There was a tax anticipation note that was ready to go, and we actually have it ready to go every summer.
Yeah. And actually, you'll find out when we look at the survey results, slightly over half of our survey respondents said that their mortgage company handles their tax payments. So we've asked several times for what the data is on that, but we haven't gotten it from the town collector. But that's what the responses were in the survey.
So procedurally, can I make a motion to put this on the warrant? Or are we holding all motions?
No, we're, no, we're doing that. We've been voting on them as we come along.
So can I move that we put this article on the warrant?
The only ones we voted to include are those.
This is the vote to leave it on the warrant, basically, not put it, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, the other, some of them we had not voted on because we wanted to see the language, so. Yeah, I would second that motion. Do we need a formal vote? I think we do.
We do.
Yeah, and we have the language.
Has the language changed? I heard something about markup or change, and I'm not sure that we have seen it, and I was just curious to know.
The only thing he added was, he added, instead of, for the purpose of establishing quarterly tax payment, he said, establishing a quarterly tax payment system.
Do we have any extras of those, so they can work from these two and see?
Yeah, they're just, I thought they-
We have one.
F1.
They have one.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So that was a, there was a very minor change in that.
So the motion made and seconded. Can I call a question?
All in favor of including it? Five zip.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Going on to our second one, which is appointing the treasurer. Some of the details about that is that our, the incumbent in the position now was appointed by the select board to fill an unexpired term, and the term ends this spring in 2019. The incumbent does support the appointment of the treasurer, and it was our opinion that the treasurer position in particular is an administrative and not a policymaking position, so that it seemed to be appropriate to be appointed. And the thought was that particularly in the financial realm, the world has gotten much more complex. There's much more regulation and requirement, and that the sort of throwback structure, which is, one of the reports referred to it as having elected town treasurer, was no longer appropriate, and that having an appointed treasurer was more appropriate. It would cast the widest possible net for qualified applicants. It does not preclude a qualified town applicant for applying for the job. It would be hiring that would be based on a very thorough due diligence and reference check about how the person would project to perform on the job. It would allow goals and objectives to be set for the position annually that are aligned with the general goals of the town at large. They would not be independently determined by the preference of an elected treasurer. They would have to be aligned in, in alignment with those of the financial director, the town administrator, and the town as a whole. It would encourage departmental cooperation. When you have some members who are appointed and others who are elected, and you want to call a departmental meeting, if you are elected, you don't necessarily have to show up. So this would encourage cooperation throughout the department. Job performance can be evaluated annually, and necessary action taken, either remedial or dismissal, could be taken on the spot after appropriate steps had been taken, and you would not have to wait three years for the next election. We do have a bylaw that enables the removal of financial officers from the town, but it requires some serious malfeasance to be removed, and mediocre job performance is, is not one of the things that would be appropriate under that bylaw. It would facilitate pay increases that were not tied to COLA, but could be tied to performance. It would encourage the upward mobility of assistants in the department, because right now, what we're doing, if we have an elected treasurer and who has an assistant, is on our dollar, we are training the assistant, and if the assistant happens to live out of town and is ineligible to rise to become the treasurer, they simply go to another town as a trained treasurer and take a different job. It also will facilitate succession planning, which we're particularly concerned about in the financial area, that there be someone there who understands what's going on and could step into, if someone is ill or leaves suddenly, that they can step in for coverage. And once again, it aligns with the practices of the ten small towns that we looked at. We are one, we are the only town that elects a town treasurer.
Would, would there be some type of a continuity requirement for the position, or if the board of selectmen changed, could they appoint a new treasurer? I mean, does this just become a political position in a different way because it's appointed?
Yes and no, but it becomes the same as the finance director, or the town accountant, or anything like that.
According to this, it does have a contract, so it's similar, so you figure you're good to your contracts up.
So it's a contracted position, okay.
I think, yeah, that's what they, that's what they highlighted, at least, as here.
So I can say in support of this, that on the state level, we've had a number of meetings with Department of Revenue and others about the shortage of qualified financial officers statewide, and the need to have training programs at colleges and universities for this, the importance of apprentice programs, and the need for the available talent pool to be able to move around statewide, so, to fill needs as, as it arises. So this has the advantage of opening up a, an important talent pool to the town that we don't have now. Without this change, we are limited to trying to find somebody in this town who happens to have the qualifications that Department of Revenue thinks are needed for-
And is willing to stand for election. There's certainly qualified people who may not want to go through the election process.
Yes. Fair point.
I'll make a motion to include this in the warrant.
I've got, before we get to that, I have a question for Darren. Darren, you deleted the language at the end, and upon approval, amend Appendix A of the Personnel Administration Plan, PAP. I'm less concerned about the temporal piece, whose comment talks about we have a year to do it. I'm not sure it's, did you delete it because it's not necessary, or it's, you know, the falls within the take other action authorization, or what was the rationale for deleting that?
I don't see that I deleted that.
Yeah, I don't think he deleted. I think I deleted it because the personal-
It's still in there.
Yeah.
There's a comment, lay it over. It's highlighted because they later layered over the comment.
Oh, the language is still in there? Great.
The comment says-
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the red line. No, no, it is deleted.
Not for my, I didn't delete it.
It's not deleted.
Darren didn't delete it, he highlighted it.
No, look at the black line, Article 19, bottom of page four. That language has been deleted.
Well, Darren's telling us he didn't delete it, so who deleted it?
David just said he did it.
I deleted it.
It's Article 21.
I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it's necessary.
It's in the black line.
I'm just reading the red line.
So I, if, if George would amend his motion to include that back in, I would, as a secundar, agree to putting language back in.
The personnel board in the bylaw is responsible for adjusting the, adding positions to that. That's why I deleted it.
Okay. I just wanted to hear the rationale for why it was deleted.
Yeah, I mean, the warrant, the specific language that's in these warrant articles is going to continue to change as we get closer to town meeting. They always do. So I think it doesn't have to be the exact language that we include in the warrant tonight. I think it's, we're including this warrant article.
Right, and Paul, you don't have to amend it. I'm happy with this language.
All right. But the town has to include a position in the personnel plan, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, but this goes to an issue later on in the warrant. I mean, I think the way it's written now, and I think it could be clarified a bit more, it doesn't prevent, if there's a sufficient appropriation made, and it's not violating any of the bylaws, you know, it doesn't prevent you from making certain changes during the year, then you do need to amend it, and that's how- do need to amend it at the next town meeting. Wouldn't there need to be applicable appropriation? And then if there is, and it falls within your authority under the bylaws, you could conceivably add a position in March and amend the Personnel Administration Plan in June. And I think what David was talking about is there's some language right now that basically gives the Personnel Board the right to do that anyway.
But the point is, why don't we do everything all at once, rather than risk, run the risk of inconsistent actions?
I agree with you. We, that's why we included the language in there. We didn't suggest deleting it.
My concern was that nobody was going to be able to explain it, Paul, but you can explain it, so.
Yeah, I, I think.
Explain what? Aren't we at some point going to have to amend the personnel plan?
Yes.
And have a town meeting vote to do that?
Yes.
Why not put it in with the article where you're creating the position?
Because they gotta amend the plan anyway and add a bunch of other things to it.
You're not gonna amend the plan if the town doesn't authorize them to amend the plan.
They amend the plan at any time, and then it goes to the next town meeting or whatever.
I'm afraid we have different votes.
No, 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 I don't, I think we get confused. We're also recommending that you amend the plan. There's an article in here, I don't know if it made it to your version.
It's seconded.
We talked about amending the personnel plan every year anyway. But I don't disagree. I think it absolutely should be in this article, and we can talk about ways to clarify.
Earlier, he said he took out the personnel amendment, bylaw amendment. David did.
We talked a little bit about it.
Yeah, we did talk.
So that's gone, from this, from this warrant. So it's not like it's going to be covered in a different article in the warrant.
Was that because there weren't any amendments needed to be made yet?
You'd need to, I don't think the Personnel Board is ready to bring the final chart because there are a number of things going on with it.
I think we should have, we can talk more about it. We should have a placeholder for that as well, absolutely. And keep this in.
The motion is just to include this article to change the treasurer from, I think the language will be worked out, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no intent to change anything about the town treasurer, which is a position that already exists, except change it from elected to appointed.
Right, exactly. So let's just vote to, I'm making a motion to vote just to put it on there unless we move on to the next one.
And actually, we took the language directly from what happened the last time this came up.
So I'm second, it's moved and seconded.
Right. All in favor? Five zip.
That's to put it on the warrant.
Put it on the warrant with the language in the black line version that was provided, dated January 31st.
Thank you. Let me pull out here. The next one is about the IT manager, and I'm looking for the specific language of it.
Well, it's Article 19 in the red line.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, okay.
Seventeen.
Seventeen in the black line.
Yeah. And it is creating the position of the information technology manager.
It's not creating a position.
Well, but it is designated as a function that be attached to the town administrator as part of the town administrator's responsibilities. And it consolidates IT authority in one location, and it can be delegated at the discretion of the town administrator. And I kind of wish we had, we did not interview the building inspector, and we should have, because he could have made our presentation.
We just talked about that for the first time today.
So that one of the issues that came up repeatedly were some of the issues that he was talking about, but there are circumstances that apply to many of the departments in town government. It would centralize the IT management function, and it could include strategic planning, procurement, backup and digital file storage, training, common database, security, and also resident interface. That is an aspirational list. It's not an expectation that this is going to be accomplished instantly in the first year, but that's what we're looking for ultimately in an IT manager. It would facilitate connectivity between the departments and those committees who do need to communicate with town hall frequently. It would improve workflow. It would increase efficiency, and it could possibly capture economies of scale. What we're very interested in is eliminating duplicative data entry, which now goes on, and as a byproduct of that, it will improve accuracy.
Corey, let me ask you a quick question, because others on the board may have a different view. This, to me, is a no-brainer. Have you looked at, I liked Darren's changes and amendments. Do you like the language, the revisions that have been added? It, I think every one of them clarifies it, but I want to make sure that the Governance Task Force is comfortable with it.
Sure.
It includes the TA designee. I think, I would move approval of Article 19 to be included on the town warrant.
Second for discussion purposes. So I think this is a great idea. I think it's, putting it on the town administrator's back is not necessarily, A, the best way to sell it to town meeting, or B, the best thing to do to the town administrator, or C, the best way to carry out this function. It may be that it's under the town administrator, but I don't know that it is the town administrator.
Well, that's kind of one of the reasons why we chose the language we chose, because we weren't trying to say that the expectation was that the town administrator, him or herself, was actually going to do all these things, but that they could have a designee or assign those tasks to someone else.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is I wouldn't want the town administrator to be the information technology manager. I would want them maybe to supervise that person, but I wouldn't want to put that hat on them because they're already wearing, this one is wearing too many hats now. And in our town, pretty much anybody who's going to be a town administrator is wearing too many hats.
Well, and we kind of generally agree with you. First of all, this is not a surprise to David. We actually talked to him about it.
Yeah, sure.
And whether he felt that he would be comfortable with doing this. And he said the way it was worded, yes, and with the expectation that this is a first-step launch rather than a comprehensive plan that would land on his desk in the first month, that he would be willing to undertake that. We thought that making the leap to an employed extra employee, technology manager, all at once, when we hadn't tested the concept of consolidated authority and responsibility, would be a step too far. That's why we did that.
Because he could also, I mean, the other option is not necessarily, his designee may be a contractor.
Contractor.
Contractor, exactly.
Yeah, he may not, it may not be an employee. I mean, that would really.
For both this and.
I actually like the way it's worded, that it falls under his per se, but I mean, he can then decide if we need to hire a contractor to do this, hire employee, or.
We could hire a contractor to do this now, couldn't we, under some. We do hire contractors. I mean, a lot of the things in there we're doing, but they're in different pieces around, under different people.
This consolidates authority in one location, which we do not currently have.
Yeah, that's the important part of it. I just, I object to having anything more put on the town administrator.
And I kind of see, at least Mike's point, so if the language is in there, it wouldn't surprise me if even a future born attempt to cut budgets would cut the subcontractor, cut a part-time employee, and say, well, it's part responsibility, just do it. The reality is, someone who's a town administrator is an experienced municipal manager. HR director kind of makes sense. They're going to have that skill set by the time they enter that. It may be the antithesis of an IT director. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Like that. And that's where I kind of have a little uneasiness with that. I don't mind saying designated and under, even defining it as separate, but to actually say it can be designated, but if not with them, could lead to future problems. I guess that's what I'm more concerned about, because someone's going to read it someday and be like, let's save money and just cut it.
Yeah, but the flip side of that is you may have a TA 10 years from now who has IT strengths, and you want him or her to do it. So I like the flexibility if it's going to be a bylaw.
I don't know any organization that's managed by the IT director, Chuck. I disagree with you.
Well.
I don't think we would want to have the TA, even 10 years from now, unless the world really changes, be the IT director.
I think, I think we, this also, but it leaves it up to the TA whether to hire somebody or hire a contractor, and I think it really should be up to him, what works the best, and this language accomplishes that.
I thought the selectmen were supposed to be the ones who are, you know, managing that function, managing, managing the office that the TA supervises. I'm not opposed to putting this language on the warrant for purposes of discussion. I just think this one's not as baked as well as the other ones that you talked about so far.
I would be concerned that nothing happened. In other words, we adopt this, and nobody gets designated, and we know there's so much work being done anyway in the town administrator's office that essentially, it never happens. That would be my, my concern. I know we use the word shall here, but because there's no consequences legally, that's called an instruction and not a mandatory. It's instructional. So what happens if it never happens, because the town administrator's too busy even to figure out this part of it, because we're dealing with some other issues?
I think, from my point of view, the point of it was, you had the building inspector here coming to the select board with a budget item to implement a certain software, okay? And that software might be usable by other departments, or maybe not, and the question is, shouldn't it be, shouldn't all those functions and the decision on software or cloud usage or whatever, that affect across the board, the departments in the town, be centralized in one place? And where do you centralize it? The central authority. That was the concept. Whether this is the exact right way to do it or not, obviously is subject to debate. But right now, we have silos. We have the collector's office having one set of software. We have, you know, people, the complaint we heard time and time again is, I can't access data that I need because it's in someone else's.
Oh, we've been hearing that for years, and the town administrator's been the guy who's been trying to fix it, and it hasn't gotten fixed.
Well, and the town administrator doesn't have the authority to cross some of those lines in order to effect the change. This is an attempt to consolidate authority so that the town administrator does have the ability to effect that change. I mean, that was the intent.
I understand. And I mean, is this something else that the 10 towns, your peer group Town Collection did? Do they have the town administrator acting as the IT director?
A number of them have IT directors. Some of them are, we actually encountered two towns who had full-time IT directors. We encountered some towns that had part-time. I interviewed at length the one in the town of Newbury, which was quite remarkable, and it was in all the towns that we were able to talk to someone about how the IT job evolved, and didn't just land fully formed as a concept. Some people took the job after it had already been established. But the one person in particular was simply an administrative assistant in town hall who happened to be very tech savvy and had previously worked in high tech, and was the person that everybody went to when they had a question about what to do about something. And little by little, when they decided that they were going to consolidate the authority, they were going to make sure that everybody was working on a common database, everybody could talk to everybody, they decided they needed someone to draw up the plan for procurement. She got that job, and little by little, she became their IT manager. And when I talked to her, she'd been in the job for six years, and she still, they still haven't totally fleshed out the responsibilities. They have not added, for instance, police and fire or the library to it.
So is this, is this issue then an issue of who's doing it, or is it an issue of eliminating those lines that can't be crossed now?
The second.
So this doesn't say that, though?
This doesn't say that. Why is it if he's the, or the TA is the information director, how do they all of a sudden get to eliminate lines that our TA now, acting as the information director, can't eliminate? What in here creates the issue, the solution to the problem you've seen?
I think it's the language for all town departments, except schools and library. I think that establishes the authority to provide, to be responsible for the IT function in every other department other than the schools and library.
I don't think so.
That was the idea.
You might want to flesh that out, too.
That's not going to work.
I don't see that in there.
Can we vote to include this in?
Yeah, let's just put it in the warrant.
Right. I've moved to approve.
I think we already have the motion.
Yeah, you made the motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I vote.
Keep talking about it.
Number four.
HR director.
Yes. And, and this is, to some degree, the flip side of the coin, because there were some issues about the difficulty of not, there were some people that felt, town employees that felt that they would prefer to have their mediation performed by a third party, and not by someone who was, to some degree, a colleague or a coworker. And so we were aware that there was already a line item in the budget, that in some cases, that the town administrator, who is designated in the bylaw as the HR manager, does in fact go to an outside consultant or a service provider in some cases. But this was trying to give broader ability of the town administrator to delegate more, or as much as the town administrator wanted to, of those responsibilities to an outside person, outside source.
So basically, it's an amendment to the Governance Task Force One's bylaw.
Yes.
To add the authority for the TA to designate someone.
To delegate that, yeah.
Right.
I mean, not to cut it short, but for Mike, I'll move to approve, because it seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I vote.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You saved the easiest for last, didn't you?
Yeah. Would you like to hear a little bit about the survey?
Quarter of 10, maybe another time.
I think it's late tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've got a.
I'd love to hear about it, but.
How many, how many respondents did we get?
Four hundred and fourteen percent of the voting.
Boy, that is a good survey, monkey.
I got the survey from about three different people, though. These big people filled it out multiple times, besides me.
I do want to thank Diane and David, and Jeff, for helping set up control. We should also be looking for employees.
Sure.
Great work, guys. I think you guys have got a lot accomplished in a year since this was established.
Amazing, yeah.
Just one, one other comment that I, I think it's very important for all towns, and that includes our town, do what you are doing every four or five years, and that that be institutionalized in some way, that every four or five years, we, as a community, look at ourselves to see, are there things that we can do better?
Actually, we've discussed that in our committee, that we kind of went to the three to five-year thing, and we thought that the purpose of it would be to, first of all, to evaluate the changes that were made in the last cycle, see how things are working, and then secondly, to, you know, to offer some new suggestions about the idea of continuous improvement.
So why not an warrant article that would say, a bylaw that would say that there shall be a review every three to five years, or whatever period of time that you pick? I noticed you didn't make a specific recommendation for a town meeting on that.
No, we didn't. No. Is it too late to do that?
Part of the discussion was, though, that perhaps the town ought to do a better job of preventing continuous improvement within itself, rather than being, not that that would prove the value of having a group like this do that, but are there any obstacles to the town looking at itself and coming up with continuous improvement in this? And from what we see, you know, we had some length of discussion about whether we see that happening.
Well, there's an inherent inertia in government, and so many other things to do, that if you don't have something in your face telling you you need to do it.
I'd go beyond what you're saying, Paul. I'm not sure it's inertia. I think, I think it's whatever goes beyond inertia. It's resistance. People don't like change. People don't like change in our town, and people in our government don't like change. And, you know, that includes elected officials, appointed officials, employees. It's hard to get change in this town hall. Very hard.
Although I. Support the idea of another article that would.
I'm, this may be in the category of not needing a town meeting approval. I mean, when Grace proposed the idea of Governance Task Force Number Two, we embraced it pretty quickly. I think it's a good idea. I don't know. I feel like this is something that the select board should be doing. It is good policy.
Without having to make.
Without having to go to town meeting to get approval, but.
There would be an issue about who appoints the committee, because in this, in our case, it was the moderator.
Right.
Right.
And that gives you an inherent credibility, that I think is important. So I, for one, think there ought to be another article that embeds that in our process in a more permanent way. I mean, it's, it's nice to know that in our minds, and so three or five years from now, we should somehow remember that and bring it up on our own. But if there was something a little more formal.
But we don't have a placeholder for it, so it would be for next year's meeting.
If you had that special, and whenever you were talking about it, we could drop it in there.
Yeah.
I think, I just was trying to. I think, I just was trying to refresh myself on the, the issue we talked about before with the town administrator, too, which it, it's the procurement officer position that David's tried to act under to eliminate those lines, which he has under the existing bylaw. That's one reason, you know, I forgot why it was he had that authority, but he has that authority now, and it can't be done. That's why I think we should, and I don't mean to go backwards, but I think we should try to figure out if there's a way, a more direct way to attack the lines, the, the demarcations.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Great work.
Yeah, thank you all for your hard work. Obviously, a lot of thought has gone into this, and a lot of time, based on what you've reported as to all your activities.
Are you, are you kind of curious as to what the ten towns were? The ten smallest towns?
Berlin.
Carlisle.
Ashby.
In order. Smallest, Ashby. Ashby, Dunstable, Sherburne, Carlisle, Boxborough, Lincolnstow, Shirley, Eyre, and Littleton. And we also looked at Newbury, which is in Essex County, but we had gotten some good information that they were a good town to look at for the things that they've done. They've done some long-term financial planning.
And I'm sorry, Dover was not on the list?
They're not in Essex County.
Norfolk County.
Oh, so you were just.
We didn't want to go over there.
Yeah, that's kind of my question. Great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean, I thought I saw Sean, there we go. Stormwater management discharge, what is it, Article 22.
Move to include on the warrant.
Second.
That's exactly what I kept.
I think it's required by our MS4 permit, to have things like this.
It absolutely is. It was actually included in our submission, that some language would be in there.
And where, and where did the language come from, or maybe that's a question for Darren?
I think Gino actually grabbed it from another community. I don't have it in front of me, I don't know if you guys have updated.
Yeah, and we can deal with the language separately, so any other comments? We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
There's an error in it. You can edit it later.
We can edit it later. Just send it around later.
All right. It's, it says effective 2017, and it actually got deferred a year, so it became effective 2018, the permit.
Oh, that's right, they did, they deleted it for one year.
So I'm guessing God from a community that didn't know that implemented it before July 1 of.
Is it a very, a very advanced community?
Yes.
Terrific. David, the next item, the change of use of existing barn at Silverwood Farm, who's presenting on this?
I don't know, I wasn't involved in that.
Nobody's presenting, it was just a memo that came from Gino, that he sent around.
I would move to support Silverwood Farm.
He's looking for comments because they have a hearing, is that the idea?
Yes.
And, and, I mean, we don't often get asked to comment, but that, apparently, that would be helpful to them to have us comment.
I think they're looking for specific comments, not.
I think they would welcome our, our support, and the reason why I think we should do that is that there was an extensive discussion at town meeting by them about this article and what they were planning to do, and my review of their application indicates that they were tracking pretty closely what they said at town meeting, and it seemed, it seemed to me the voters approved this, and therefore we should support it.
Why is it that the request, then, is for approval of uses that are not authorized under zoning?
That's the way the article's set up.
Oh, I'm sorry, not covered under the agricultural exemption?
Yes.
Yes, so, so what I'm, maybe I'm missing, why it is that this is important for us to comment on.
I can't answer that, because I didn't ask for it to be on the agenda, but I, I believe we should support them.
Yeah, I support it as well. I wish Addy were still here, I'm not sure why, it is unusual that the Planning Board asks us, but.
I didn't see him on.
Well, actually, I'm not even sure this requires a vote, if we don't have any specific or formal comments.
On the Silverwood Farm planning, we have, we have an item, a memo from the Planning Board in regards to the site plan for Silverwood Farm, the folks on farm events, and you sent it to us looking for comment, Planning Board.
It's, it's been sent out for comment at plan date on the agenda for next Tuesday for Planning Board, and so just no comments required.
Well, are you looking for our comment on anything in particular? I guess that's what it is. It, it's unusual, we have never been asked to comment on a site plan that I can remember, and I understand this is a, sort of a new thing, but we didn't know if there was something particular you're looking for comment on.
No, in fact, I should say, the first time I saw it as well, that we were seeking comment beyond just what we have at our regular open meetings. I think it is an attempt because of the farm events, and because it's been, there's been interest, especially among the butters, in, in something that does involve more than just the, the, it's an attempt to be, to engage citizens, it's an attempt to engage other committees to, I guess, get outside our own silo of what we are looking at, and make sure that we're not missing, or that there's no unintended consequences of some of the language, so. I mean, it's just an attempt, and, and it's an engaging, I guess, interconnect of all of those around the world. I don't have any specific comments to it.
Yeah, I know either.
I know either. I would, I would think, I don't know, it looks like the driveway crosses this pond, I don't know if there's a flood, flooding access issue, that the thing cuts off, so you can't really see it, but that seems to me more like a police fire, building department concern.
Are they cutting any screening, foliage, kind of, that was an issue, and they actually created a bylaw for some of that, and agriculture areas? That'd be my only comment there, is if the parking, parking lot goes right up to the edge of the property, if any trees or screening are being cut, would be my only, and there actually is requirements in the existing laws to make sure they don't do that.
Right, and we, we, the last planning board meeting, I was first in mind that we were looking at the site plan, and I know we were looking at the sub-acting, there were some questions about screenings, items that we are going to be talking about in more detail at meetings, and, and what needs to be done, what needs to be required, does it make sense?
Does this well become a public water supply, in which case you wouldn't want to be putting paving within the, the zone one?
That's a new use.
Are they paving? It's, it says existing gravel area there.
Okay, well, maybe that's, maybe that's the answer to it, but.
Not to mention newer storage, fertilizer storage, lubricant storage can't be within the zone.
It's, that's something the owner might want to look into, I don't, I just don't know. Because that, it's converted to an assembly, assembly place.
Building blocks.
I just know we ran into some trouble.
Where's your hand on the agenda?
I think it's probably, yeah.
Why not?
I don't know, just, we're not being very systematic here for you, Addy may, sorry.
Okay, yeah, so.
We know if someone wants.
I have some specifics that I didn't know around again, I just, you know, so we take the comments, think that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's and not making stuff there, so.
Okay.
And it's, it's my, my, well.
We know, we can always go to Gino's office and check out the big plans and look at them more detail.
So could I suggest that all the comments that Mike had and, and Eric had be sent to the Planning Board?
Along with general support for the idea, is that?
General support for the idea.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thanks, Addy, sorry to grab you again. The next item on the agenda is routine business finance director report, TA reports, selectman reports. Sharon?
Move to waive the reports in a minute, how long our meeting is.
David? Anybody? Okay. The language. The next item is to enter into an executive session under Mass. General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual. Two, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 2, to conduct collective bargaining, agreement negotiation, parent's grievances, police union. Item three, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, police chief, police lieutenant, fire chief, finance director. The board, we're not planning to return to executive session, are we? Will not return to exec, to open session. I need a second and a roll call vote.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Mr. Giamo. Having a second, we will now have a roll call vote. Mr. Durensis.
Aye.
Mr. Yon, aye. Mr. Giamo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Excuse me? Mr. Morrell.
Aye.
Having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed, and we will not be returning to open session. We are now in executive session at 10:02 PM.